...oh one, the first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. If you'd please stand with me and bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for this beautiful day and everything you've given us. Thank you for allowing us to live in such a wonderful community with wonderful people. Please guide us as a board tonight and the decisions we make in knowing that they affect our community. Please help us in the budget process to be physically responsible, sound decisions that are in the betterment of our Fairview community. Guide us and direct us in all we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
[inaudible]
Second item is approval of the agenda. Do we have something we need to? Didn't you have the board seats?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to request to add the expiring board seats. We have all the applicants here to speak tonight.
Okay. And I think in the email, that was just something that was left off.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we needed to add it.
And if we could add it early on in the agenda so they don't have to wait through the meeting.
Oh, that's a wonderful idea. So, first, we will need to vote the exigent circumstance to add it.
Yes, ma'am. You can add it as, or anywhere you want, but if you want to add this first item to the agenda under new business, you can. You can have your hearing now, or you can wait until you get to the new business. All you need to do is say that it's an exigent circumstance, have one state what the, someone state what the exigent circumstance is, then the board has to find out that it is or is not. If it is, then you hear it. If it's not, you don't.
Okay.
Mayor, I would make the motion if he is stationed. The person left off and the people aren't here. What's your decision?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Have a first and second. Any discussion? And this is just on the hearing? And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, back to the agenda.
Item nine A needs to be deferred.
Nine A? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add, just like we did the last meeting, just an update on the investigation so that the board can be advised as to where things are, as well as the citizens. And I guess we would need to add a hearing on the exigent circumstances of that, and then the item, if approved.
Would you like to go ahead and have the hearing now, like we did the other one, just to have it cleared up?
You can either have a hearing now, or you can tentatively locate it somewhere and have the hearing when you get to it.
Okay.
But if you do, if you're going to tentatively do it, you need to say where it's going to be on the agenda, what item.
Okay, well, let's just be consistent. Well, no, either way, we can go on.
Move to declared exigent circumstances for the same reasons we did last time.
Okay, and what these reasons are?
That the city is spending money on these employees that are on administrative leave, and we'd like to have some ideas to when that expenditure is going to terminate, it affects the budget.
The only thing that I would like to add, this is still under investigation, we do have a meeting set on Tuesday, and it may be premature.
Who has a meeting set Tuesday?
I do. And Mr. Hall, and with the DA, and Sheriff Huang. So, with that being said, I still think it's premature, and it's just going to cause more disgruntled, and when we can't really, there's nothing really to talk about until we get the report back. Go ahead.
There was something to talk about. You just gave an announcement that some of us weren't privy to, that you're having a meeting on Tuesday.
Well, I just got it.
Well, then, there's something to talk about.
Okay. Okay, you want to take it for the vote? Everybody want to add it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. I plan to give it in my closing announcements.
What item is going to be added as?
It will be, how about, let's do it at, well, new business.
Wouldn't it fall on the old business?
Very well, it'd be old business, but...
Item B, as we've discussed already.
Okay.
I'm just, Larry, that'd be appropriate.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Approving, put it on old business, item B.
You can do that. Wait a minute.
We used to...
You have to be old business, because you...
We deferred old business.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just keep everything else in order.
It'd be item C, though, wouldn't it? No, the new would be A. You're correct, it's B, I'm sorry.
Okay. And we've already got the vote, so now we're back to the agenda. Approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
We already have the first and second, so, well, I meant to say, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is citizen's comment, and the first citizen is Darlene Manger. Please step to the podium and state your course, name, and address.
My name is Darlene Manger, and I live at 7106 Clearview Drive here in Fairview. I've been a resident of this city since 1989, full-time, with a 10-month period in 2003, after my husband passed away. I have followed the politics of this, and it is embarrassing at the way this city is reflected throughout Williamson County. I'm employed by the largest employer of Williamson County, which is Community Health Systems. They had committed, and then we published on social media, they had committed to dedicating resources to a day when we were talking of honoring our city employees, and I had to get a call after our first event on the news and in the paper, that they would have to recant that offer because it was embarrassing to be affiliated with this city. Now, I'm going to, I am not of any, I'm not any more intelligent than anyone else in this room, but I think that if we can't sit here as adults and work through these problems, how do, you have to realize that when you're running for an office, you made a commitment. It's the same thing as being a police officer, a school teacher, or an IT director as myself. You took that job and you knew what it was. In reality, in corporate America, a lot more dollars than the city has, but people are on administrative paid leave for months and years. It is my opinion, I do not know Chief Harris personally, met him for the first time tonight, and I think that the best move for us is we keep these people on leave until we have toxicity. And if you have ever worked with a team, you know if there is a divider in there, it's when you can't trust someone. And we are talking about law enforcement. These are people that are on the street to take care of our children and our safety. And if we have a group of men and ladies that are not able to trust and support each other, then I think we're in dire straits now. Financially was a big deal, but I think that if we are jeopardizing the safety of our citizens, and I'm ashamed that we have elected officials that cannot work together and with our commissioners and with our city manager to get this resolved. And the last thing is, I have spoke, I've decided to speak out, and I am not speaking for anyone but myself, but I can, I have all the documentation, where multiple people have reached out to me. And the only reason a lot of people will not speak out on social media anywhere else is they're afraid of retaliation. Is that what we want our city to be? Do we want to know that Darlene Manger was on social media questioning the actions of someone, and she gets a ticket for going three miles over the speed limit? You know, I hope that doesn't happen, but that's the reality here. The only other concern that I have shared, multiple people in the city have shared with me, is we do believe it is a conflict of interest for the Williamson County Sheriff's Office to have conducted this investigation, because it's my understanding, Mr. Sutton is an employee, that, and one of the officers that are on leave is his son. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, the next citizen is Bryant, and I'm sorry, I don't know if it's Rohl, or if you'll pronounce your last name. I was having trouble determining if it was a K or R.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, my name is Bryant Kroll.
Kroll, okay.
I'm an attorney with the Blackburn Firm, and I represent Lieutenant Pat Stockdale, Lieutenant Shane Dunning, and others. I'm here today, they've hired us because of the circumstances surrounding their placement on administrative leave, and given the time constraints for comment and the recent publicity in the media, I need not rehash all those issues with the board. But my purpose here today is to not only introduce myself, but also to notify you that we've requested the personnel files of numerous individuals, and to provide you all with a courtesy copy of that request, which was made pursuant to the Open Records Act. Hand these up.
Sure.
And with that, that's all I have. I'll yield the floor after that, unless there's any questions.
Okay, and that will conclude our citizen's comments, and we'll move on to awards and recognitions. Mr. Hall?
Mayor, we have no awards or recognitions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and that'll take us to item six, staff comment. Mr. Hall is co-director. Would you please give us an update?
Thank you, ma'am. As I've been reporting for several days now that our planning has started at the Roadscapes, we had a great dedication a week or so ago. And one other thing that's on the horizon pretty soon is a pre-construction meeting with Hardest, so we can get, so they can get grading permits and get started. So, that's where we are in codes. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, great. I did have an inquiry about the Meadows subdivision. Is there any changes? Because they were concerned, there was some concern about grading.
Yes, I just talked to Larry outside a few minutes ago, because Chris Vance was in earlier today, asking a question that I didn't have the answer to, so I asked Larry, bring it to go. They're actually over there harvesting trees and chipping them up, and spraying the chips out on the ground. And if they're too close to that string, that becomes a T-deck issue, so that's what I'm going to advise Mr. Vance of in the morning.
Okay, so you'll be contacting Mr. Vance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything for us?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of things tonight. One is July 3rd, reminder that we are still open for sponsorships, food vendors, and looking for donations for the large flag, for the fire truck to display, as well as new bunting, hopefully for the front of City Hall. Those donations can be brought into me, and I will keep a record of those. The second thing is the census. We have been completely certified, everything is to the state, so that is out of our hands at this point. And on the third thing, well, we can talk about that with the city manager search.
Okay. Okay, so we are doing it on July 3rd, which is a Saturday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Might be a good year to try the 4th, I don't know. Have y'all considered that? I think years past, one of the reasons that it was on the 3rd, just because for the citizens, or they could be off with their families on the 4th, but I don't know. It might be a good year to reconsider, yes.
And it's also in competition with the National Firework Show on the 4th, so we've always seemed to have a good crowd on the 4th.
Okay. Okay, and I've had a lot of people ask about wanting to play or, you know, music, just send them to you, Ms. Johnson, or is that...
Actually, all the musical acts this year were, have already been set, and that's been done by our extreme lighting and sound guys, so that was not done in-house this year. They volunteered to do that as part of their services.
Okay.
But they can still send any information to me, and we'll hold that for future, I'll send it to Jenny for the park.
Okay. Okay, that will bring, any questions, anybody? Okay, and that'll take us to Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one announcement, we, I've got, the auditors will be coming in next week for preliminary work on the 8th, 9th, and 10th. Busy in the office, if it hasn't been already. But I apologize for getting out the April report, the first meeting in July, I'll have May, the second meeting, I mean, not July, but June, and I'll have May, the next meeting in June. As far as April, hold on, got to turn this on. Revenues came in at $549,730. We did have a couple of quarterly payments, our cable TV franchise tax, and also our TVA payments in lieu of taxes. Also got our T-dot resurfacing grant in. Our budget, we anticipated bringing in $550,134 in April. We came in under that, $404. For the year, we anticipated $5,105,406. We have brought in $5,426,199 for a surplus, or over our, it's not surplus, over our budgeted, anticipated revenue of $320,793.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Tom? On the, on the budgeted revenue for April, $550,134, and the actual revenue, that actual revenue is including the T-dot resurfacing grant money that came in?
Yes, yes.
So, we would have been, and that's not something we actually...
No, they both, they both include that.
Okay. They both do?
Yes.
Okay.
On our expenditures for April, we had $418,899. We had a property liability payment, and that's really the only difference we don't Okay, for April, we budgeted $468,820. Our actual, $418,899, came under $49,921. Year-to-date, budgeted $4,259,555. Came in $4,090,180. We were under our budgeted projections, $169,375. Whoops. I'm getting better. All right, this is our surplus. Our revenue, $5,426,199. Our expenditures, $4,090,180, for a surplus of $1,336,019. And as far as our fund balance, our, all of our funds combined, $2,039,174. Any other questions?
Nope, nobody? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other staff to report? Mr. Paisley, you got anything going on? Do we have any here to come in with the park? Yeah, I thought I saw you raise your hand.
I was asked to do some research into rebroadcasting of Channel 19, the meetings to Channel 19. At this time, I was working with Sissy, trying to find out information to bring back to you, and I have nothing at this time. Want to announce the start party, June 3rd, that's this Friday, from 8:30 to 10:30. Star Lake Jam, Friday, June 10th, 6:30 to 9 o'clock. Headliners, Johnson Grass with Blue Heart. Have a fishing rodeo, Saturday, June 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. It's pre-fishing day at Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you. Camps, still going good?
Still going good, and it'll start the 13th of June.
Oh, okay, good deal. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Approval of the minutes or consent agenda, if no items to be removed? Good a motion?
Moved to approve.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Old business, the new A is discuss and take action on city manager hiring, and that's, you have some updates for us, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. The committee actually met twice this week to review all of the applicants, and I'd just like to say thanks to everyone who spent their time. They did a great job, I think, being very, they just went through each one and took their time, really evaluated the applicants. We should have everything to send to you guys next week. I guess what I'd like to know is how do you want the applications? You want copies, you want them digital, do you want them non-redacted? That kind of thing. And then, I think we just need to kind of move forward with the schedule for the interviews and how that's going to be handled as well, so.
Okay. So, everything's closed, they're, they've already done a portion, right?
They've reviewed all of them, we're ready to finalize the matrix and just submit the final findings to you guys. Like I said, that will, should be done by mid-next week, I think.
Okay, well, I would kind of feel and please weigh in, that as soon as they have their next meeting and feel like they're at that place, then we'll just put it on the next agenda to, or it's already on there, but we can determine what, what the timeline is, that, you know, the process of how we're going to bring them in. So, if you'll just let us know when it's all finished up, and then hopefully it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, I think they're going to finish up by email, submitting everything through me, so, like I said, do you guys want me to just email that?
You think it's safe just to go ahead and... And put it on next agenda, then, as far as time, like, setting up the process of the interviews?
Right, yes, yes.
Okay, so then, we just need to determine how, if we want electronically, or how we won't.
Right.
I would, me personally, it doesn't matter if you want to send it electronically, but I would like their matrix with it.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, any other thoughts? Is everybody fine with that? Okay.
When will we get there?
Hopefully, mid-next week, depending, as long as we get everything finalized.
Okay, right.
We're trying to clean up the matrix and notes, you know, where we've noted everything. Another question, and I don't know if you guys want me to do this or not, but this came up in the, in our meeting tonight, was any kind of, not a, not a background check, because that'll be decided on the candidates, but if you want an internet search, Google search, social media type search, if you guys want me to handle that, if you guys want to handle that as part of the process.
I'd like to, would I like you to do it?
Anyone else?
Well, I mean, we'll have the names if we want to conduct our own, but if you want to just be that uniform of, hey, I found this or that, that will be fine, too. You know, if you have time to do that, just add that. That's fine with me. Any other comments?
Is it, when do we expect to wrap this process up, just out of curiosity?
I would say, as soon as we get, we decide the timeline of, we bring them in pretty quickly. I mean, these people have already put applications, so as soon as we get it on the agenda and say, we might choose to do, depending on how many's out of town, like, is, we got to take in consideration if there's travel, if we're going to have to do that, but I would say that we would want to allow them some notice. And then, you know, if we want to do something similar to last time, where we brought them in for, you know, a meet and greet kind of thing, and then the interviews, we could do that, or do the interviews and then meet with them, I mean, that's just what we've got to decide. And then, but a lot of that, we're not going to know until we know is somebody from, you know, Cincinnati, Ohio, and are they going to, can they drive in a day, or do they have to require more travel time and stuff like that?
How many are we interviewing? How many did you interview last time?
Well, I think they were going to give a top...
What was decided at the meeting tonight was they would just give you guys the matrix, because they realized this is really just the first step. And they're going to include a summary sheet with that, so that you can kind of see where they came from and what their thoughts are.
Well, and one of the things originally is, we had a lot more applicants, like, the times before, so this is a smaller number, I think 13 was the number. I mean, we can look at the matrix and decide, you know, we want to interview the top five, or we may look at the matrix and decide they were neck and neck, and maybe do 10, or, you know, all 13. I mean, it's not, it's, the numbers are not as large as prior, where we really needed to.
I believe we had 11, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I believe we had 11 come in under the timeline, there's two that were late.
No, there were, there were 13 that came in the timeline, that's what I was going to say. There are two that came after. The recommendation of the committee is that those do not get considered unless there is an issue with the first 13, and then you might open it back up if that's the case.
Yeah.
And then, those could reapply it.
I wonder if we should take in consideration, there was a lapse of, our internet service was down, and phones, and, you know, how, how long were you down on the internet? So, but it took two days from the candidate, you know, that could have, if they needed to reach out or send it in. Of course, you could do mail, there is snail mail. But, anyway, those are, we could decide, you know, at the next meeting. But I think it's really however we want to do it. I mean, just as long as the process is fair and equal to everybody, and we may want to do it quicker, or make it a two-day event. One of the things we did last time was invite them back. They went to a meeting that night, so we did it on a Thursday, and they, they met with us, and I think the night before, we may have had a mixer, if we want to invite, you know, since we were going to invite the committee in. So, we just got to decide what order, and if we want to do all those things, so. So, we're just going to go ahead, and if you'll give us the information, have it on No action will be taken. And then, the new B is the investigation. Go ahead, Commissioner Cracher.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just, wanted to add this to the agenda, primarily to get an update as to where things were, and what's transpired since our meeting two weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Chief Harris has an update. He actually talked to Jeff Ford, Jeff... Jeff Long, excuse me. He was on vacation the week prior. This week, Kim Helpers on vacation, so that's probably the delay in the meeting. So, I'll let Chief Harris come forward and let him give you his report.
I don't see Chief Harris.
He just stepped out, I don't know where he went to.
Keith is going after.
Okay.
It's pretty much what she was talking about earlier, ma'am.
Okay.
See how quick he comes in.
Here he comes.
Mr. Hall, wanted you to come up and give the update on the investigation of when you talked to...
Actually, you did at the beginning of the meeting. Supposed to meet with the sheriff next week and the DA, and they will give us an update. But until we get something from them, I don't have anything. The investigation is still going on, but we're supposed to meet next week.
Sheriff, did he say he would possibly try to have a preliminary report next week?
Preliminary report, yes.
I mean, Chief, yeah, okay.
I guess my question is, is not necessarily to you, Chief, but if the district attorney is involved in this case, then it's clear to me that we're talking about some sort of criminal allegations.
Correct.
And if we're talking about criminal allegations, then that's really out of the purview of the board or the administration. Why, I still can't understand, I just, please, somebody help me understand this, why we can't administratively take whatever action it is that we need to take to begin to heal as a department and as a city. This past week, I don't know about you guys, but I'm pretty stressed out. I mean, this has not been a fun for any of us, I know. And so, help me understand why we administratively can't take whatever action we deem appropriate based off of policy violation, not criminal allegations.
Well, if you bring them back and something happens without anything in writing, then we're at fault. I mean, it's, you know, it's not an administrative thing at this investigation. I mean, I would love to bring them back as bad as anybody, Commissioner, but when you can't do it because of legalities, then you've got to be very careful.
But we're talking about two different things, and that's what I'm trying to understand. We're talking about a criminal investigation that now, at least, the district attorney is involved in in some capacity, and then we have administrative policy violations that were clearly, at least, discovered early on by the administration. And they're two separate things, so if administrative or from a policy standpoint, there's some action that could be taken by the city, whether it's bringing, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, whether they come back or don't come back, that's not the point. The point is, right now, they're on paid leave, and they have been since, one since February, one since, two since March. So, if there's some policy or procedure issue that the city needs to deal with administratively, I don't see how the two are interrelated.
I think they're looking at the overall process of the whole department in general.
Well, I don't think the district attorney, I think the district attorney couldn't care less about our policy and procedure violations. I mean, that's speculative on my part, but I don't understand why the district attorney would care whether or not these employees violated some policy or procedure in the City of Fairview. If she's involved, she's involved because there's some criminal allegation.
Yes.
And so, we have perpetuated this, and I'm not, and again, last week, two weeks ago, I said, you know, I'll take partial blame for that, because on February 29th, this board did meet. But I'm very concerned about some of the statements that have come out, let me finish, about that meeting that took place on February 29th. And I have some questions about that meeting, because there were some, there were statements made on tape, and it was a surreptitious recording, and I'm not saying that I necessarily agree with people running around tape recording everybody, but nonetheless, there were statements made that that was an illegal meeting, and these were statements made by you, that that was an illegal meeting, that you were there without counsel, that this board pushed you to take certain action on that particular day, as related to the chief coming back, as related to officers being sent home, and I want explanation, because that's not how I recall that meeting taking place.
That was took place.
So, you're telling this board that you were pushed by the five of us...
We all agreed to take action on Chief Harris.
I would like to call executive meeting, and I would like to go back, because I feel like you're violating and potentially putting us in a lawsuit.
Violating and potentially putting her in a lawsuit.
Well, I'm just saying, you're talking on investigation, I call executive meeting.
I will not participate in the executive session. This is the citizens' business, and it should take place right here.
No, we need to go back.
I'm not going back.
I just want to get legalized real quick.
Okay.
Sit right here.
I will.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and resume the meeting. Um, I'd like to let you know that when I got up and left, I wanted legal counsel because it was always my understanding that executive meetings could not be discussed. Um, so, and we know, we've had the city attorney state many times, what's reasons you can have executive meetings. So, just wanting to look out for the city as a whole and feeling responsible for our actions, wanted to make sure that everybody had a legal understanding what could be said in an executive meeting or not. So, Larry, if you will give us that guidelines, and then we can proceed on.
Okay, basically, in an executive session, what the board, I mean, they're only called under very limited circumstances to deal with legal issues, normally either pending or impending litigation. What the board says to the attorney under the Constitution, and if you look at the Open Meetings Act, it says that the public's business shall be done in the, in the public. Uh, but it also has a provision that says that anything that is guaranteed to be privileged by the Constitution or other state law is not affected by that. Now, what, what that, by say that to get to the point that generally what people say to, uh, their legal counsel is privileged, what you say to your legal counsel is privileged, what legal counsel says to you is not. Now, the privilege belongs to the board member, and if that board member wants to talk about what he said, he, he or she has that right. You can't talk about what the other people said because they didn't waive their privilege. The other concern that I have about, uh, and it might shed some light on this, is you have a simultaneous investigation going on, uh, as I understand it. One is policies and procedures, the other is possible criminal matters. The policies and procedures was authorized by officials of the city. The district attorney and the sheriff's office doesn't need anybody's authorization to look into anything they want to that's criminal, or that they think is criminal. And I say all that to get to this point. Uh, the reason that the two are hopelessly intertwined until you see that report is, this board, me, or anyone else here that's not taking part in that investigation, you, we have no way of knowing who is the target of the criminal investigation. We, is it the same people that has procedures? We don't know. Is it all of them? We don't know. Is it some of them? We don't know. Is it all of them? We don't know. And that sounds like a broken record, but one of the things that the rule, that the Open Records Act says that's, that's allowed under the Constitution or other state law. There's a rule in the Rules of Criminal Procedure that says that you don't release, or you don't have to release, uh, information that is a part of an ongoing, or maybe part of an ongoing criminal investigation. So, you don't want to release something that could conceivably be, when you don't know what the criminal investigation consists of, that might inadvertently, uh, have a detrimental effect on a criminal investigation.
Okay. So, we, we can proceed, but you cannot, what you're saying is your advice, that we can only speak on what we said if we choose.
If, if you choose to.
To share.
To talk about what you said, you can do so, but you shouldn't be talking about what other people said because they have, they have waived their right.
Okay. Commissioner Crutcher.
Have they waived their right when they've gone and told a third party what was said?
If you have proof that they told a third party, they may have.
I think that Channel 2 News has proved that they told a third party about things that were said in the executive session.
Well.
It was played on the news.
You'd have to run that before the board to see if they, uh, now, there may be some things, I don't know, uh, exactly, you're saying that they talked to a third party. Uh, there may be some things, I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know if anything was been said to a third party that was said, stated in that meeting or not, and I don't know if there's any proof of that here tonight.
Well.
But that would be for the board to determine, not me. I mean, if, if you, if you put something out for public consumption, you probably have, but you'd have to produce that item that was put out for public consumption, where it was, where it was stated, and let the board vote on it as to whether they waived their, or that person waived their, uh, right to be, to the privilege or not.
Why did my questions earlier precipitate an executive session?
I don't know, sir.
Well, you're the city attorney, I mean, you, you went back there with them and had an executive session. What about the line of questioning that I was engaging in, recalled for an executive session?
Well, what they said to me would have been privileged, as to what precipitated that, that was said.
I'm asking you, sitting right here in this public forum, what I said, what I was questioning about, why would it have necessitated an executive session? I'm not asking you what anybody said to you back there, I'm asking you, in your legal opinion, what, the line of questioning, why would it have precipitated an executive session? Under what legal basis?
The board can ask for an executive session to discuss something anytime they want to.
Now, you said only under limited circumstances, just a second ago.
Under limited circumstances, and the limited circumstance would be, uh, is this going to have an adverse or pot, potential adverse effect on the, on the criminal investigation?
I'm not talking about any criminal investigation. The comment made by the mayor before you guys had an executive session was, is you're going to get the city sued.
What'd you read?
No, I didn't make that comment.
I didn't say, you made that comment, I said the comment by the mayor.
Well, she may have.
You're going to get the city in a lawsuit. That was the question. This wasn't about criminal investigation.
She may have.
So, I'm going to get the city sued by trying to understand what has transpired over the course of the week, but the city manager going on record with these individuals that are the subject of an investigation being recorded and it getting leaked out to me, that's not going to get the city sued?
You can sue anybody for anything.
Well, that's exactly right. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about where the leadership is in this city, and where we're headed, and, and we've had none. We've had none when it comes to this investigation.
Um, as I stated, um, I felt when you started mentioning executive meeting, that that because I have been told several times ever since I've started, that exec, executive meetings are privileged, and I feel like I have a obligation as leadership in this city to make sure that we don't have a board member violating, and so I have the right to ask the city attorney and call executive session, and that's what I did. Now, he clarified and gave me a direction, so you feel free to say whatever you said in the executive session, and if you want to discuss it, you can, um, but everybody else has a right to determine if they want to talk about it or not, and they may want to do it, I don't know. I have an obligation to make sure that in the meeting, that we are doing what legal counsel advised.
What executive session are we referring to?
Well, I, you said something.
I said a meeting that occurred on February 29th.
All right.
If there's an executive session, do you have to be present, Mr. Attorney?
It says I have to be present if the board requests it.
Okay. So, I'm asking specifically, so, but if you're not present, then anything that's said in that meeting conceivably is not attorney-client privilege, right?
It couldn't be. I wasn't there.
So, then it wouldn't be subject to any confidentiality rules, right?
Well, what that individual said, uh, could, could possibly be construed to be, uh, their privilege, uh, because they were think, they were laboring under a thought that what they said was privileged, uh, but no, I was not present.
Well, and the problem that I have with the executive session, is the reason I didn't go back there tonight and have an executive session, because nothing that's said back there, every state, ever stays back there. It's out before we leave the parking lot, as to what's been said back there, so I'm not going to participate in it anymore. But the question was specifically about a meeting that occurred on February, February the 29th, right back here, where there were six of us present, five of us and Mr. Hall. And my questions were specifically as related to comments made by Mr. Hall to a third party since that meeting, about what transpired at that meeting, about who caused what happened at that meeting to transpire, and I want answers. I want to know why the city manager is going and telling people that we participate in any legal meeting, advising those individuals that they didn't have due process, advising those individuals that they should sue the city. I, I want to know.
You do have some wrong information, and if they're taping me, they're violating polishing procedure.
They very well waived Mr. Hall, and that's all fine and well, but it doesn't change the fact of what was on the tape. It doesn't change the, the, the clear and unambiguous statements that was, that were on the tapes, and I, this, if this is an pending investigation, then I don't know why in the world our city manager is talking to principals involved in the investigation. I do not understand it.
I'm being railroaded.
And, and this is, this gets us back to the investigation.
They, they have developed a friendship with me through the years, and I'm being railroaded.
Well, my concern is not that, it's that.
The only thing that was stated to Pat Stockdale, which was repeated, I mean, told to me by, uh, Chief Harris, was that he, he had possibly been cleared, and when he asked me, he calls me late at night, asking me, is it true? He already had heard from somebody else. I said, from what Chief Harris said, it looks like you were cleared.
If he has been cleared, and that statement was made two weeks ago.
That's, was it friendship that I thought I had confidence in, and I thought it would help him be relaxed until the investigation was over with.
Well, if that was a statement.
Now, if that's wrong, then, then they're trying to do me in, and I didn't do nothing to those boys, they created it themselves.
But if that.
And I am absolutely tired of being ridiculed for something I didn't do.
If that statement was made to them two weeks ago, then, and he, and if he has in fact been cleared, then why, why is he not working? Why, why are we still paying him to sit at home? That's what I'm trying to understand. This, this is our money, this is citizens' money that we're spending, weekly, daily.
I'm very well hoping that we get him cleared by Tuesday, that we'll have a preliminary so we can move forward, but until we get that in writing, according to legal counsel, I should not do nothing.
We need, you need to have something other than statements, because as you have just said, statements sometimes get changed, and what I saw, if he gets, if the city gets an email from the person conducting the investigation, or the person, the vice person who's conducting it, somebody in an official capacity that says this individual is clear of the, the criminal charges, then I have no problem with it, but until it does, I have a great deal of concern, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I have a great deal of concern from a standpoint of somebody getting hurt, if, if, if that changed, and you had somebody out there that was in a status that you did not know, and says, well, you know, I had a telephone call, how do you prove a telephone call? You can prove a call was made, but unless you're taping the, the conversation, you don't know what was said. And, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole report, as long as they've got a statement from somebody who's in charge of that investigation, said these individuals have been cleared, then you've got something that you, that you can produce. I, I have no problem with it.
Last, last thing, and this was more concerning to me than anything else that was said, it was that this board collectively, or individually, was somehow pushing you as the city manager to make some decision about this investigation. And that's not the meeting that I participated in.
It seems like every meeting here lately in front of the board that I'm being pushed to move forward to bring these gentlemen back, and I, I can't do it against legal advice, Commissioner.
Who has said bring these gentlemen back? I said if the man's been cleared of wrongdoing, then I'm saying we've done nothing, we've taken no action administrative, that's what I'm saying.
Well, legal advice is still advising me, until I get something in writing, I cannot bring them back.
Yeah, I just want, just quickly, if I could, I just want to read one thing from the Attorney General's opinion, it's, it's dated January 19th, 2011, this is Attorney General opinion that specifically deals and addresses itself to questions about the board collectively or individually giving directives to the city manager, because I feel like we've been accused of doing something as a board, whether individually or collectively, that we've not done. And this is what, this is the questions, that, these are the questions that were posed to the Attorney General. Uh, I'm going to specifically deal with number three. "Under the charter, may an individual city commissioner or a group of city commissioners demand that the city manager take specific actions regarding the day-to-day operations of the city government." The answer simply was no. However, in the, in the analysis, this was, this was one of the statements made by the Attorney General. Um, this last question, specifically the one I just read, "Under the charter, an individual city commissioner or a group of city commissioners may demand that the city manager take specific actions regarding the day-to-day operations of the city government," or may not demand, excuse me. "Of course, members of the commission individually or collectively are free to express their wishes regarding the city manager's management of day-to-day operations and day-to-day city affairs, but the commissioners can act officially only by majority vote of the board." And this goes to something I was talking, that's going to come up later on the agenda, about the nepotism policy. One of the things that I have said all along is that we individually and collectively have some political influence over you by virtue of the fact that we collectively are your boss. So, therefore, although we can't, or you don't have to necessarily do whatever it is we tell you to do, uh, in terms of personnel matters or the day-to-day affairs of this city, if you don't, the way I read the AG's opinion, then you, if you're outside of that 12-month period, your contractual. period or your contractual relationship with the city, then you're subject to being terminated. So yes, we have influence, and yes, we can go into a meeting with you individually and say what we think. We have the right, just as any citizen in this town can come into your office and say, Mr. Hall, I think you should do this. And I don't like being tagged with this label that we have somehow tried to drive this train, or that we've somehow had to try to take, you know, micromanage you, or take some sort of role that is illegal in this process, because that's, I've not been part of that, and I'm not seeing this board collectively be part of that. And I'm appalled by that comment. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else have any discussion? We'll move on. That will bring new business. A, Discuss and Take Action on Planning Commission on Rezoning Property of Cox Pike. We moved the, never mind, we moved the open seats ahead, and I apologize. So that will be Discuss and Take Action on Open Board Seats. Can I get a motion on the floor? I was trying to see if, it may not be in my packet.
I've seen it, so I know it's.
Yeah, you gave it to us, yeah. Okay, well, I can pull mine up.
I'm trying to pull mine up, can't seem to get it to come up.
Um, hang on, let me get back. Okay, open seats, I think I got it. Okay, it looks like we have Planning Commission seats open. It says Lisa Anderson has written request to be reappointed, or be reappointed.
Move to approve the renewal of Lisa Anderson to the Planning Commission.
Well, there's two, you want to hear them all at once?
I thought there were just one, I'm sorry.
Is there three open seats? Okay, then Matt Biata also wants to be considered, and then Tim Mangram also wants to be reconsidered. We have new applicants. Ron Rowe, Jacob Bleak, Bleak, sorry, and Paul Golden, and Savalar Kelly. And those are the new applications. Love to see interest, I really do.
Yep.
Any discussions or thoughts? Sure. I think we have typically in the past.
Who's first in the list?
Ron Rowe.
Good evening.
Hello.
Any questions, or what are you looking for?
No, just anything you want to share, or why you have a desire.
Well, on my application, I stated on there that I did sit on the Fairview Plan Commission from January to November of 2014. I was a member of the Fairview Park Commission from February 2014 to January 2016, in which two years I was chairman. I was volunteer assistant to the city manager 2015, 2016, attended and participated in staff review meetings for the planning and zoning, and attended the Plan Commission meetings. I'm a current member of the American Planning Association and Tennessee chapter of the American Planning Association, so that's a good source of information and training. I attended planning and zoning conferences 2014, over 16 hours of training, attended Greenways and Trails Conference in 2015, that was over 16 hours of training. Previously, I was a member of the Planning Commission, or had Planning Commission experience, including chairman in Streamwood, Illinois, as well as zoning commission and zoning board of appeals in Streamwood, Illinois. I'm a member of the Friends of Bowie Park, Friends of the Library, and I'm not a real estate person, I'm not a builder, and I believe, I believe that decisions made on the Planning Commission have to be compatible to our existing theme, which is rural and country. That's where I stand on that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Jacob Bleak, is he? Is he here? Jacob Bleak? Nope, not here? Okay. I don't know who I was looking for, I apologize. Paul Golden, is Paul here?
Good evening. I don't have any planning commissioning experience before. I just have a will and desire to serve my community. I do, I am in the real estate business. I'm an accountant, assistant controller for a real estate development, commercial real estate company. So I do have some experience with that. I don't really have anything else to say.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Kelly.
Hi, Salvatore Kelly, or Sam Kelly. I've lived here since 2002, Pinecrest Court subdivision. Both of my children graduated from high school here in Fairview. I was on the industrial board, or planning board, I'm the adjutant of the post here for the American Legion. I attend Grace Chapel, I'm an usher there, and I just want to serve the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and take any nominations? We can take a vote?
I make a motion we retain Lisa Anderson on the Plan Commission.
Okay.
I would have been that to include Matt Biata.
Okay.
I second Tony's nomination.
Okay. So these are, we're going to vote to retain in y'all's motion to position. Okay, any other nominations of retain?
The three that were currently, all three requested to come back, is I'm in, that we return those three.
Okay. So we have a motion that you're going to retain Lisa Anderson, Matt Biata, and Tim Mangram. Okay, any other? I don't, I would like to kind of discuss, I think that I wouldn't want to lose any three of the commissioners that are on there. I think they're doing a great job. But I do think sometimes we get stale by never rotating the positions. And so I hate seeing where the Planning Commission has grown so much, to lose anybody right now, because I feel like we're really strong, and I hate to make change just to have change, but I hate to miss opportunities to have three new, fresh eyes to come on the committee. But this has been such a new committee that, well, I mean, some people have been on there a while, but in some ways it's, because there is always, and the seats are put, there's always turnover, and so it was helpful having some stable people that have been there for a while to help teach and direct, because sometimes people want to be on the Planning Commission, but, you know, you have to learn a lot, and it's a life of hard knocks sometimes. So with that being said, I don't know how to remedy the problem, and I don't know that tonight is necessarily it, but I do really love the fact that we have new people applying for these positions. Any other comment?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, I don't believe you have a second to anything except the original amendment, the original motion.
Stuart.
The original motion.
Oh, he amended.
Lisa Anderson.
He amended, you're right.
You don't have a second to Commissioner Bissell's motion, nor to Commissioner Johnson's.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there is a second to Commissioner Johnson's amended motion, and that would include all three current positions, correct? Okay, and any other nominations then? All in favor? Yes.
Just for discussion, I want to tell the other three gentlemen that apply, because I really appreciate it. I've known Ron for some time, and I know the other two people a little bit, and it's good that you come up and put in for it. Don't stop applying for different things that we're doing up here. Ron, you served on several, several, several boards, you give a lot of your time, and I appreciate that very much. So any input you give us, we appreciate it. I just want to say that for you, though.
Okay, all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for recommitting that against the original motion. So we'll move on to the next, and that is the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and Wayne Lohman. And he.
Accept Wayne's reappointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any other discussion, because there's no other candidates? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The next board that is open is the Industrial Board. And most people wouldn't realize that, even though it doesn't meet much, it really does inquire some homework and thoughtfulness. The two candidates are Ken Bryson and Salvatore Kelly, and they have both requested to be reappointed.
Move to accept their reappointment.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings to the Beer Board, and we have Mr. John Hall, which I don't see him present.
He did not, I did not receive anything in response for Mr. Hall, and no new applicants for that position either.
Move to defer.
Okay, got a motion to defer? Get a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do it. I don't have to take a vote to defer, but. So Park Commission, Ron Rowe is currently, and he's not seeking a reappointment, so we have Brian Hendricks and Neil Rice is the new applicants, and there's one seat. So if I can get a motion.
Point of clarification.
Is Dr. Rice not already a member, based on?
On the historical.
He's a member except for the last two years, but there does need to be a member of the Historical Association on the Park Commission.
I would make a motion that we include a member from the Historical Commission, Dr. Rice per se, and that we select Mr. Hendricks as well.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tree Commission, it has Debbie Rainey and Larry Richards. It has on here Larry does not wish to be reappointed, and then it has nothing about Debbie Rainey. Do you have anything?
I did receive confirmation from Ms. Rainey, that she does want to be reappointed.
Okay, so she would like to stay. So that leaves one seat open, so we'll have to defer one seat, because there's, yes.
Mayor, would it be appropriate, Mr. Rowe, would you care to serve on the Tree Commission?
He's in the hall.
Gone.
Well, I'd say we would have to open it up, but there is, that does leave one seat, and I would encourage anybody that applied for other, like, planning or any of it, to reconsider and submit an application for the Tree Commission.
Move to approve Ms. Rainey, defer on a second seat.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to, you know, keep Ms. Rainey, and on the second seat, we'll defer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That will bring us back to Discuss and Take Action on Recommendation from Planning Commission on Rezoning of Property of Cox Pike from RS40 to mixed-use pug with R20 base density, residential slash commercial, general mix, used planned unit development, map 43 parcel 30.01 and 31, 32.19 acres, Denny Proctor and Welch owner. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Joe Ayler is here with Mr. Spice Engineering, and also Lisa Anderson here will be here to inform you of how the Planning Commission voted.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to try and keep this brief. It was my impression, when I left the meeting with the Board of Commissioners in March, that it was a unanimous decision on your part to keep a low-density zoning on this tract, which meant RS41 acre lots. I was shown several weeks later a front-page story on your Fairview Observer summarizing my presentations, no one called me, by the way, and ending with your planning director's statement that I could always resubmit for RS20. So I resubmitted because I didn't want that question hanging in the wind. I thought the decision was it stays RS40. Your planning director in a public vehicle said I could resubmit for RS20. So we did that. We resubmitted. We increased the size of the alley lots to the same size as the alley lots in Boilston Place, 40 foot by 130 foot, 5100 square feet, because you approved that even though for months I'd been told you would never approve a 5,000-square-foot lot. When you have only 72 lots. When you have only 72 lots instead of 88 or 93 lots, your drainage requirements for the onsite sewer go down from five acres to four acres. So I took that extra acre, and I lengthened all the lots from 55 by 100 to 55 by 125 and 55 by 130. And I left two extra acres at the rear next to the sewage treatment. So we'd have flex to accommodate the onsite sewer once our soil studies were completed. That, too, was, it would seem, if you've watched the tapes, turned down unanimously because the prejudice is, in fact, that you want to stick within RS 40. I would simply state, your own engineer, Will Owen, repeatedly tried to emphasize that you had approved sites similar to this in the past. And I believe restricting this site to an RS 40, in effect, becomes a process of eminent domain that compromises the landowners and compromises me because the RS 20 was submitted by Mr. Biadasa's suggestion at the same time that the RS 40, to the contrary, was suggested. So I need to get a judgment from you to finalize the jurisdictional process. Is it RS 40? What you have before you is a reasonable facsimile of RS 20 modeled on the Boilston Street extension. And we'll answer any questions you have and try and keep it as short as we can.
What are you trying to say with all that? Are you trying to say that Polston Place, because it was rezoned, that your, this property should be rezoned? Is that what you're trying to say?
I'm just saying, do you want an RS 20 or do you want an RS 40? I tried to give you an RS 40, and the result was, without particulars, that you wanted to stick to a low density. But I got mixed signals.
You tried to give us an RS what? An RS 40?
Yes. It's presently an RS 40 and RS 40. I'm not sure which. But it's a one-acre lot tract. And in the past, all your subdivisions that you've brought into the city were RS 40 and changed into RS 20. Most of your subdivisions are RS 20. And that's what we tried to conform to.
But on our land use map right now, this is RS 40, RS 40.
Yes. It's inside the city limits, and it's RS 40.
Okay. And you're asking us to rezon it. And your basis for us rezoning it to, even though it's been denied several times, is...
Well, I submitted RS 15.
Okay.
In keeping with the original directions from the PC Commission. Then I was told, you want to keep it RS 40. Then there was a public article with your planning director saying I should resubmit for RS 20. So I just did it. I hadn't planned to come back with RS 20. I had planned to file complaints about your judgment that it should remain RS 40. But I hadn't planned to come back. I did so because a public statement was made by the planning director stating I could and therefore must resubmit as an RS 20 because I want to exhaust the process.
And since that alleged public statement, you've now gone back to the Planning Commission, and they have decided to unanimously not approve your project again. Is that right?
Joe can answer your questions. I wasn't technically there.
Okay.
Basically, the subdivision was turned down because the current zoning is low-density, RS 40. While across the street, the Myers was annexed in as an RS 40 and then subsequently rezoned to RS 20 in the same night in 2006. We brought the development back, reduced the number of lots, made the lot sizes bigger, and reduced it to a medium-density RS 20 was our last request.
Would you like to... Ms. Anderson, you're here. Would you like to speak as Planning Commission Chair and enlighten us?
I'm sorry. I don't understand the question.
Well, I wanted to ask Lisa Anderson, the chair, if she could give us explanation.
Okay. I'm Lisa Anderson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. And the requested zoning of the property off Cox Pike RS 40, which is by definition a low-density, to mixed-use pud RS 20, which is by definition a medium-density, was unanimously turned down by the Planning Commission in our May 2016 meeting. The finding of fact shows that the zoning being requested does not meet our Fairview's land use map for this area and consequently turned down by the Planning Commission for this reason and that reason only. That that area is low-density. We chose that we want it to stay low-density following our land use map, and it's being asked to be changed and rezoned to a medium-density.
Okay. Thank you. And why, and he's referring to the addition to Polston Place, and he, from what I take, is he's saying it's a similar lot? If you can verify any differences, and what's the difference and why you approved one versus...
The side of the street that Polston Place 2 is located is zoned for medium-density. And that is what is being asked for in that area, is a medium-density for that project.
Okay.
If it was rezoned to medium-density. If it was brought in as a low-density and rezoned at the same medium.
The zoning in that area is a match for that, that medium-density zone. And that's what we look for, is to match on that side what's already there is a medium-density zone. So if we wanted to match that zoning, because this is an extension of the Polston Place that's originally there, then we have the opportunity to do that.
So it was a Phase 3 of a subdivision that started in what year? Or Phase 2? Which, it was Phase 2? And how long ago did Polston Place start? Does, do you know?
2006.
From 2006.
Mr. Biadasa. Polston Place 2 was rezoned to RS 20 in 2008. There was a rezoning as a pud for RS 20, which was the current zoning, just for clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions?
Is he here tonight to get a plat approved or to get property rezoned?
It's a pud.
It's a pud. So we approve both. That's what we learned.
You approve that that is the zoning?
And it's the pud that's presented?
You can ask your lawyer, but it's my understanding, when you change the existing zoning for a development, if for any reason, let's say the soil tests show that the subdivision can't be built, then your variance is specific to that development. If the development doesn't go forward, then the variance dies and goes back to the original RS 40. That's my understanding.
Well, once we, we had some discussion about this just recently, and it was explained by our attorney that when we're voting for rezoning of a pud, you're approving the pud. And we can't make change...
The master development plan is completely what is a part of that pud. So once you, once you rezone that, you're including that master development plan, and that's a part of the pud.
To make it short, it don't come flat again for you to approve the plan. Do you approve the pud? Do you approve the plan?
Is that listed on the plat? The specification?
I was trying to see what he gave us.
We should talk about 5,000 square-foot lots.
It has two types of lots. It has the alley RS 40 by 130, which are 5,000. Larger lots, which were 5,000, are created through process.
And I don't even see the plan in our package. So we would be voting on something that we're not even... Is it?
Yes.
I don't see it.
I have a lawyer.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. I have a first and second. Any discussion? Yeah, I got it. Sorry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
So what I heard, if I may clarify, for the record, you want to keep it in RS 40, low-density zoning. And for that reason...
I think what we're seeing is it does not meet the, the overlay, the city overlay. It does not meet...
Why hurt her justification for it? I just needed to finish the juridical process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Item... Find it.
B.
B. Discuss and take action on contract between State of Tennessee and Department of Commerce and Insurance and City of Fairview. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just renewing our contract between the State of Tennessee and our insurance. Tom, you may want to expand on it a little bit more.
This is electrical permits. This is something we do every year with the state because we work with the state in issuing the electrical permits.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss and take action on nepotism policy. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Board. Y'all have in your packet the policy that we're presenting. And if you have any questions, I'll feel free to answer them. The main thing is the hiring of Board of Commissioners relatives. I'm recommending that any new Board member that the city manager doesn't hire, keep in focus.
Just for clarification for the Board, this is just the policy that would be placed into the Policies and Procedures manual. So you will see it again. If you approve this or whatever you add to it, it will be made, this policy will be made part of an ordinance for the Board to approve the ordinance and placing it in the Policies and Procedures manual. Policies and Procedures manual was approved by ordinance, and any additions or changes will also be approved. And this is not in ordinance form, it's just the, the policy.
Other than, other than this one's drafted as a policy, it'll be placed in the manual, and the one that I proposed last fall was an ordinance, what's the difference between the two?
The one that you had was as an ordinance, when you passed it, it would have just, it would have been placed in the Policies and Procedures manual. At, when Mr. Hall was telling me about doing this policy, I just suggested for ease of preparation, if you bring the policy and get the policy ironed out, and then all it do is just take that and put it in ordinance form so it could be placed, whatever the Board ultimately passes, would have that policy in an ordinance form. In other words, you take that and make that the body of the ordinance.
Then I'm saying substantively, and I realize that's the difference, but I'm saying substantively, what's the difference between the two? Do you know?
I don't recall, to be honest with you.
I did notice one typo that, obviously it was a typo, it was just June 2 of 2016 instead of 2106 or whatever.
Yeah.
The only thing I had was concern about the, with the world that we live in, the narrowness of the definition of what constitutes a relative. And the one I had, I took, I thought, great care in defining it a little more broadly to include, you know, domestic partners, people that are cohabitating together, that type of thing, even adoptive relationships, that really is not addressed in the one that I see in the policy that's been presented to the Board. I think we need to consider making that a little broader in 2016 than just sister, brother, mom, dad.
That change could easily be put in there. Just email what, the change you want to Mr. Hall, and he can send it on to me and, because I've got a copy of that.
And the way I read it, it would not, any member of the BOC that has a family member working for the city, although they're grandfathered in, they would not be eligible for transfer or promotion or, what's the language, as relates to that? I'm not sure if it says... So long as a member of, a family member still on the BOC is what I'm asking.
It doesn't say that specifically. You want that change, you could follow that. That's the reason why it gives us a policy. And then...
I thought there was, can I see, can I see the policy just please, just quickly? It was not, I don't have my entire packet, and my iPad has crashed, so...
While he's reading that, how will it affect a current employee, say, a 15-year employee that a family member decides to run in the future?
Decides to do what?
How will it affect a current employee, just say, one that's been here for one year or 15 years, and one of their family members decides to run in the future?
Well, once he ran, that policy would apply to him.
So what happens to the employee?
That would be up to the, to the city manager.
City manager to town.
So basically, you're saying the city manager could dismiss the employee?
Well, the city manager can dismiss any employee.
But for that reason, because his family member or her family member's on the Board?
As it's, as it's written down, yes.
So basically, you're saying that if there's a family squabble, somebody could run for the purpose of getting the family member fired?
Technically, I thought you're, you're correct, yes.
I don't think that's a good ordinance, sort of. I mean, that's just, that's craziness.
Again, that's the reason we didn't put it in an ordinance form. Any submissions that any Board member wants to make to the city manager can be put in there and then placed in the ordinance, and the ordinance would come back because this won't be signed off on tonight.
Well, and I kind of agree with the fact of you cannot stop people from wanting to run. And if they've already been a 15-year employee, their family member wants to run, that's where, but I think, yeah, that's going a little too far. But I do agree, nepotism, you should, you know, I think there should be a policy that you're not hiring family members or putting, you have the Board of Commissioners. But it's one thing if somebody has an established job and had already been there, and their family member wants to run, then they can't vote, and they have to disclose on what they can't vote. I mean, that's where, you know, I think we start really getting nitpicky. Now, can't hire a family member, that's different. You know, there, you already have a sitting commissioner, and your family member, I understand why the public doesn't like that, and they worry about conflict and stuff like that. So in my opinion, I kind of, I'm fine with anything that's put on here. I have no, I think a policy in place is, it's good, it will help with some of the public image that we have. And I think it would be a strong move to say, we don't want that perceived conflict. Yes. Okay. I thought the city attorney, but, okay. Commissioner Crutcher?
I found what I was looking for. It's under Part 2, Application, Subsection B.
It's under Part II, Application, Subsection B, and this is what it says, and I just want to make sure I understand what this language means. It says, "The nepotism policy does not apply to individuals hired prior to June 1, 2016." That makes perfect sense. "And shall not be retroactively applied. However, change in the status of employees hired prior to June 2, 2016 shall be governed by this policy." So my question is, what does that provision mean? Does that mean if there's a sitting BOC member, then, uh, their family member that's working for the city could not transfer or be promoted or change departments or anything happen with their employment while that family member is on the BOC? That's the question.
Well, that probably should be, if that's what the board wants, then it should be spelled out and made, made clear. I would suggest, and I'm not gonna put in the, the language in, but if, if there's something you want changed, if you would submit those, I would suggest that you submit just in a few sentences what you want, refer to the section number, or if it's a new section, to Ms. Brandy, and then she can get that to me and, and I can very easily word it and put it in. Well, so once I get all that, the next time it comes back, it would be in ordinance form, which don't mean it can't be changed, but we won't have to change the ordinance so many times.
Okay.
'Cause if you notice, there's no approvals on that. It's just, we just want to get your consensus, and if you want some changes, then please submit them, and we'll get them in a form that-
So I, I'm confused. I want to go back to Stewart's question. So if somebody has been working for the city for 15 years and then a, uh, their brother decides to run for a board of commissioners, there, at that particular point, there, that's considered to be covered by this, and they cannot be promoted, and they cannot?
Well, if you want something-
They're subject to dismissal.
If you, technically it could, but if you want something different than that, then, you know, please submit it and we can get it in there.
Commissioner-
Can I just quickly respond? And this is, this goes along with what Commissioner Johnson was asking. This was in the policy that I drafted in November, and I think this addresses itself to his concern. Says, "No person who is a relative of any elected official shall be considered for employment as an employee of the City of Fairview. This shall not restrict nor prohibit the continued employment of individuals in the position held on the effective date of this policy. Further, this shall not restrict nor prohibit the continued employment of individuals in the position held at the time of the relat, time a relative of an employee is elected to a position on the board of commissioners after the date of the employee's start with the City of Fairview."
That would take-
So that addresses itself to that.
Yeah.
So, my big question was, I got beat up pretty bad over my draft in November, and I don't see a whole lot of change. I got beat up over the legality of it and, and, you know, we went on for hours, and this is pretty similar. I mean, but I think that language specifically would deal with-
It would.
Commissioner Johnson's question.
Yeah, and I did, that's the reason that us, that when Mr. Hall was talking to me about getting this together, I said, "Well, let's just get it in a form where we can present it to the board, and if they want changes, then please submit those changes to Ms. Brandy, and we'll get them in there and come back in a form of an ordinance."
And I could even go live with the idea of that, that, that the person who's employee, say for instance, um, my son works for the city and I run down the road and get elected, and he's working for the city, then while I'm a board member, that he just simply couldn't be promoted to a director level job, that he could be promoted from street worker one to street worker two, that's not really what I'm talking about, but a director level job.
Yeah, or above.
Or above, right.
Then please submit that, and, because I don't remember all this stuff.
Yeah, right, I understand.
Please submit it to Ms. Brandy, we'll get that in a form of an ordinance, and it will also specifically mention that once the ordinance comes finally be placed in the, replace the appropriate section in the Policies and Procedures manual.
But how does that affect it if his brother runs?
If he's an employee of the city, that language is, that language is in, he, that would be a def, that would be defined as a relative, and if he's already an employee, when that family member runs-
He can go to street worker two, but he can't go to-
To a director position, just, just so long as that family member's on the board.
So the family member that's in the squabble with his brother could stifle his career?
Well, hypothetically, I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a-
I mean, it's, it can happen. And you don't have to be smart to be up here, you just have to be popular. You're talking about ruining people's careers over a family squabble?
Yeah, I, I-
I, I don't see that, but-
Well, I, I've just seen too much dysfunctionality in families where they would go to any length to, to do that. I, I think if the employee is already an employee of, of the city, and their relative, except for maybe their immediate relative, like a spouse, runs for office, I don't think they have any control over that. I, I don't, uh, it seems to me that's stretching it too far. But, uh, maybe I'm missing a point here. I don't, you know, I can understand some limitation, uh, on promotion if the, uh, if the board member is elected first. But the other way around, that, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Johnson, that that's, uh, that seems rather punitive, that, you know, uh-
Just think, if the, if the person, this is, go back to the street worker thing, they were the highest street worker thing they could be at, they'd been there for 18 years, but the director is set to retire, but the guy's brother got elected and he's in line for the position, but now we have to give it to somebody else. He's put in 18 years of his life for this city, but he doesn't even qualify for the position he probably should be getting, just because he's got great work ethic and everything, but his brother doesn't like him anymore because they had a family squabble, and now he's stuck where he is.
And the flip side of that coin is, his brother gets elected, he gets promoted to the director position, and regardless of the merits of his promotion, it's going to be construed as his brother got elected and he got promoted to the director position. That's the flip side of that coin, and that's what I want to prevent. Because then it takes away from the work that these employees are doing every day on a day-in, day-out basis.
And the easiest thing to do is take it to the General Assembly and let them make it statewide. Then there's no problems, because nobody has an issue with the county doing it, nobody has an issue with the state doing it, it's just the City of Fairview for some reason, and that's kind of odd.
Well, if anybody can sit here with a straight face and say that there, there's not been a lot of issues raised by virtue of the fact that we've got three people sitting on this board that have direct relationships with people that work for the city, I don't think they'd be telling the truth. I mean, there's been, there's been tons of issue, and we're faced with the issue right now, where Vice Mayor Sutton has to recuse himself for votes because of the situation. We're, we're faced with that issue constantly about having to come in here and, and tell our conflicts of interest or, or whatever it may be. That, that, I don't think that has to be that way here. I mean, this is a small board, it's a small town, we've got five people on this board. I mean-
So you do, you do, you are agreeing that you do think it should only pertain to Fairview, it should not be something that's statewide?
I am elected representative of the City of Fairview, not the State of Tennessee and not the county. I am concerned with what's going on right here in Fairview right now.
Thank you for answering that.
Well, it, you know, you brought it up, I, I didn't. But what, what concerns me about it, and, and I can see some validity to the director because the director, uh, is a lot of times in direct contact with us. So I, I, we look, our directors give presentations, we ask them questions, I, I can kind of follow that, uh, for those that came on afterward. But just because, and I've said this before, just because somebody takes an issue doesn't mean it's a valid issue. Just because somebody else doesn't think it's right doesn't mean it's right or wrong. It, and, and so my concern when you blanket everything like that, i- is that, in any given situation, we're going to find somebody that takes issue with it. Why is their taking issue more important than the other person's right to be employed or do a good job? I, I just don't understand that. That's the part that bothers me. So I, I, I'm, uh, I'm not against, opposed, uh, the director limitation, if the sitting board member is, uh, comes before the person is hired, but I think if the person is already working for us and has an extended track record to hold it against them because some relative of theirs, other than their spouse, decides to run and wins, I think that's, that has, uh, that's not very fair, and I think to try to meet the expectation of someone, uh, simply because they think it doesn't look right, there are lots of things that we don't think look right, but I don't expect people to, you know, change the law to meet my expectation. And I, granted, I'm, I'm, I'm biased in this. I, 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 I have a difference of opinion because of that, and I know what steps were taken before my relative was, was brought on as employment, and I know what I did or didn't do. So, yeah, I, I admit to that upfront.
One of the things that, um, MTS has recommendations of nepotism policies, most cities have something in their policy and procedures retaining, I don't care if it's government, or a lot of times corporations have it. So I don't think it's uncommon or unrealistic to make a clear guideline and ask employees to go by. And this is saying, this is where our stance is, and, um, and this is what the expectations are. So, um, I think if we don't have some kind of statement of nepotism, then we're behind times. Um, I think it's a common practice, and I think that it's just giving the employee and any future commissioner guidelines, and they have to take that in consideration. I'm not saying that what you suggested could never happen, um, but in the same sense, you know, it's just, that's going to be a very small percentage, and we represent the majority. So, um, I really think that having some kind of nepotism in, you know, policy in place is, it will help. And I do think there's a lot, I mean, I think unfairly, a lot of people have, employees have done a good job, but they have a cloud over their head because their parents or family member or somebody's a commissioner, and they're probably great employees. And, um, so, you know, I do think that it definitely, um, has to be something they consider before even applying for a job, that it, it really goes both ways. And if they make that choice, then, you know, to come to the city, then it's okay, reasonable to say, as long as your family member, then you can't remove to a director level, because that is indirect. And we do, regardless, we all know, as a majority vote, we can't, we shouldn't be having anything to do with the day-to-day operation of the city. We should not have anything to do about, um, the, you know, the city employees. That's the city manager. And, but, we do important things, and there are things that come up that will involve these family members. So, yes.
What are we going to put in place that would prohibit a husband and wife from serving on the board at the same time?
I don't know.
I don't think there's any reason for anything. They're elected, they're popularly elected. If they both get elected, they're both elected.
So the mayor and the vice mayor could be husband and wife, and you're fine with that, because people think it's okay?
They both get elected. Not when people think it's, I mean, yeah, if they both get elected, yeah, absolutely. I don't think we're talking about the same thing.
No, we're, we're, literally, we're talking about, two brothers could be married to two sisters, and all four of them be up here and have a majority and run the city, and you're okay with that? One, one family could control the entire thing, and you're saying you're okay with that?
I'm saying, I'm not going to deal in hypotheticals of what could happen, I mean, anything can happen.
Well, you're in court, I'm pretty sure you deal with hypotheticals a lot.
Anything can happen. I mean, I, I think that's far-fetched, and, you know, I think we're talking about a situation that exists right now, in real time.
Okay, then why was it not an issue until it was my family member? And the multiple, multiple, multiple employees that had commissioned members and double employee members of the city? Nothing was ever said by any of the three people that you're saying, "Won't this changed", until it was me? Now, that's a fact. That's a fact.
The year-
Goes all the way back to when Ken Bryson was mayor and his grandson was hired to work for the park. Nobody said a word. Scott McCoy wouldn't have dreamed of saying anything, but when it came to be Stewart, then everybody had a problem.
Well, my response to that is, if you're taking it that personally, then it's prob-
Oh, it's, it is, it is-
Then it's probably an issue.
It is that personal. It is that personal. It's that personal to the fact that you want to talk about Friday night?
Friday night?
Yeah, Friday night.
I'll talk about anything you want to talk about, Commissioner.
Hey, let's stay on the point.
And I'll talk about it right here publicly.
Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and get it started.
Yeah, hey, let's, let's go ahead and focus on what we're focusing. If you have something you want to-
You're going to get on somebody for talking to somebody that's on suspension, but you yet turn right around and do the same thing?
I'm not the city manager, sir, I'm an elected member of this legislative body.
What you're saying is, you directly violated the charter because you went and met with an employee, which you're not supposed to have any dealings with whatsoever.
Well, hey, point of order.
That's not true. Let's talk about you going to meet with an employee.
Listen, this has nothing to do with what we're, this is a-
This has to do with him attacking my wife because she works here.
Well, y'all can deal with this later. This is professional.
No.
Hey, this is amazing. Stop it.
It most definitely does, 'cause everything you're saying pertains to her because I'm here through November. Now, after November, I'm out.
Everything I'm saying pertains to Alan DeSalleso.
Stop, this is unprofessional, and you need to stop right now. We are talking about the nepotism policy, and we are going to take the changes, and , um, the city attorney said, "Please email them if there's something that needs to be discussed." I'll be happy to take it to, um, y'all can talk after the meeting, or if you want to put it on an agenda item next week, but we will focus on the agenda item. And I, you know, I would try not to take it personally. We are talking about a policy and whether or not and what changes we want to make.
We're going to move on.
Yes. The next item.
So, Mayor-
What are we doing with it?
This is-
We're going to email Larry with-
Email Larry, that's what he requested. This is his original draft, and if we want any changes, he will, my understanding is-
I'll get those and get them in a form of an ordinance, if you can get them, or you, probably better to email them to Brandy, and then she'll have a copy of it, and she'll email them to me, we'll have one central collection agent.
Um, okay.
And please do that as soon as possible, especially if you want this on the next board meeting.
Okay, um, we have had a request for a break, so we will take a, um, five-minute break only, um, but I ask that you, um, we will come back in five minutes, and we don't discuss anything that was just discussed a minute ago. We, until after the meeting, we have a long night. We haven't even got to the budget.
Okay, so F. Discuss and take action on the amended B. Oh, gotcha. Extension to the interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview for the provision of periodic roadwork and maintenance to the municipal roads.
This is just an extension of our contract we have within a local agreement with the county. If we are lucky to get them paving in this part of Williamson County, then we can maybe hopefully utilize them to pave some roads at cost, get gravel at cost, this type thing. So it's just an extension of the contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. G. Discuss and take action on material contract power show, Mr. Hall.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is something Brandy's going to speak to for us.
This is the contract for the materials only for our fireworks show on July 3rd. Same company as last year. And also like last year, our, we have a couple of firemen that will be shooting the show for us, fully licensed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion?
The only question I've got, I had a lot of complaints last year, is how late we started that.
Fireworks will be at 8:30 this year.
Eight thirty?
For all these early birds.
Okay. Just, just trying to make sure they, they knew that, so we could move forward.
Okay, so, and this is, I guess you've called and this is the best rate that you could get.
These are the, this is the company we used last year that the, the guys are certified through, so I'm certain that this is a.
Our guys are certified through them? Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H. Discuss and take action on first reading 2016, an ordinance number 930. An ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending July 30th, 2017. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to try to alleviate some confusion, we will vote on the tax rate on item, was that J? And we have to do that separately. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but that's the way the state tells us to do it. It makes more sense to me to do the tax rate and then the budget. But they say do the budget and then do the tax rate to fund it. So that's why it is on the agenda this way. I guess the first point of order with the budget is the numbers have just minuscule changed everything I presented to you over the last month or so. The first, after talking with the city attorney and the HR consultant, MTA's Human Resource Consultant, John Grubbs, it became evident that I needed to separate out. The original proposal that I gave y'all was with the police department restructure that Chief Harris had, had proposed. And it became obvious after the discussions that I needed to put an option of keeping it the way it is. So that's, that's the only differences. And I'm just going to read what I sent you in the email. Chief Harris's restructure proposal, which is represented in, in, in your first, it says that I sent you, first reading PD restructure. What it does is it, it removes an assistant chief position, it removes a detective position, it removes two lieutenant positions, and it adds a captain position and three officer positions. So that's pretty much the difference. It's a thousand dollars and forty-one, a thousand forty-one dollars to restructure. And it's a thousand forty-one dollars less to stay the same. As far as all the other numbers, virtually nothing else changed from when I met with you guys. So we can go through any, any, that's the first thing we need to decide. Do y'all want to, really, the board only has, only the board has the power to add and remove positions. The department head can't do that. So that's why it was presented to you in two formats. We need to pick which one and then go forward. Yes?
No, I'm waiting for the.
Go ahead.
I, I make a motion that we do not reorganize the police department at this time for the following reasons. First of all, if we're going to take the position that we need to wait on the investigation to complete, then it, that too, I think, has some peripheral bearing on our organization. As many of the positions that are being eliminated are currently occupied by the people on administrative leave, and I think that creates a problem within itself, that we should not use organizational reorganization as a alternative to dealing with the issue at hand. Secondly, I think that on the not-too-distant horizon, we plan to hire a new city manager. And unless something has changed, Chief Harris is planned to retire at the end of the year, end of the fiscal year. And so I believe that both of those items that, given all three of those items, that it would, it would be more prudent for us to wait until the new people were in place and the issue was resolved about those three officers on admin leave. What?
Yeah, they're silent. I'm sorry about that. Okay, so you're basically recommended, did you make it as a motion?
Second.
Okay. I do, I do want the city attorney to read his comments in the records or the city recorder about why we should hold off on the restructure.
You want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know it's wordy.
Well, that's fine. In my discussions with Mr. Hall this morning, I believe you have some questions about abolishing positions in the police department while the holders of those positions are on administrative leave. First, should any, should any such reorganization be taken at this time before the new police chief and city manager are in place? Not my call, but just a concern that I think should be noted. The board can take whatever action they want regarding the reorganization, and I have no say in that, just making a point. The reorganization, as I understand it, is the abolishment of some positions in the police department, including some positions of persons presently on administrative leave. That section is included in the city's Policy and Procedures Manual, page 29, Section G. The reorganization plan and the positions created or deleted would have to be approved by the board commissioners. While the board has the absolute authority to create and delete positions, that action could include layoffs of persons in those positions, but it must be done in accordance with Section G, which, as I read it, would allow senior positions to move down within the classification and take junior positions until there's no place for the last person standing to go except to be placed in a layoff position. I would be concerned by such an action regarding the people on administrative leave because this could be seen as an attempt to deprive those persons of their position without the hearings for any possible dismissal, dismissal action that they are provided in Section D and E, page 28 of the Policy and Procedures Manual. I have a similar concern, though, for different reasons, of bringing those persons back to duty prior to receiving the investigative report. The board authorized the investigation to bring the persons on leave back to work prior to receiving the investigation results, is to undermine the very investigation the board authorized. From a standpoint of possible legal defenses only, whatever the report reveals should be revealed before any action is taken to either return those persons to duty or proceed with termination proceedings. While I acknowledge the fact that the board of commissioners, as a group or not individually, have the authority to return those individuals to work, and such action could, and I say again, could, have a very adverse effect on any future actions, and the city might desire to take relative to said employees. Will it have such an effect? I cannot say because I cannot adequately look into the future. Just wanted to bring that fact to the attention of everyone involved in such a decision.
Okay, thank you. I wanted the city attorney to read that in, that way it could be in the minutes and just for the public to hear. Because with that being said, I have, I'm not opposed to the suggestion that what the chief proposed is restructuring. I know there was a lot of discussion last year on if we were top-heavy in that department. And so I am glad that he wanted to look at the department and see how it could run more smoothly and what he would like to do. But with that being said, I do feel like we should heed the attorney's advice, and it would be easy once a new city manager or even a chief of police to go back and amend the budget. But it's not enough money to, to get stuck in something that might potentially cause the city any trouble. Any other thoughts?
It actually costs us money to restructure, which is.
Thousand dollars.
Don't even understand, but.
It's just the way they fail.
Well, isn't it because they added new positions? Aren't those in the restructure?
Yes.
But it's lower-level posi.
Well, the reason is because some people had to move into a higher position, and the people that were being reclassified had to stay close to their same salary. So that's where the difference is.
But that was just in the recommendation from the city attorney to what you could? Because if you take somebody in a position and you decide to reclassify them, and they've been a 15-year employee, you had to bring them back to the pay of what a 15-year officer would make, correct?
Right. For example, if you have somebody at, at grade nine, step seven, well, you can't, and you, they go from that position to a position in a grade, in a grade six. Well, you can't put them at grade seven like they were in nine. You'd have to move them along the scale that is similar to where, that, that, similar to their experience seniority and qualifications. So, you know, they're, they might be a 617, 618. You, you, and especially in, in where we are with no, I feel like it's prudent to plan for the highest, and, and as things take care of themselves, the budget definitely will be amended. But this is, I feel like, the only route we can take at this time.
Okay, with that being said, I mean, as a board, you presented it's two different budgets, and we can choose which one we want to go on. But I do want to, before we got hemmed up on that, is there any other questions about the budget or concerns that you, as a board, any of members have that you want to?
If you don't mind.
No, please.
I've had a little bit of discussion about the appropriation from different funds, or some things that we're going to get into on that. And I'm not sure if this is appropriate time to be talking about that or not. Probably not at this time before we get into it. And I think you and I had a discussion when you brought us all in one-on-one.
Right. I, I would, I would like for us to decide which one we want to go with first, and then, and then just make changes to that one, if, if it's okay with the board. And I've heard Commissioner Bissell, I mean, whatever y'all want to do. I would, I would like to go with, we're either going to go with a budget where the police department is restructured, or we're going to go with a budget where the police department is not restructured. Get that decision out of the way, and then, I mean, they're vers, they're the same except for that.
Okay. Well, the way it's read right, the way it reads right now is we would be voting for the budget and which one. So we really need to probably have amendment where we, or change it, where we're not approving the whole budget. I mean, I don't know how.
My motion was that we would approve the budget, that we would choose the non-reorganization option.
Okay. And then, once that is, we take a vote, we got a first and second on that, then we can go back and discuss the actual budget.
Discuss the actual budget.
And have another vote. Okay. Any other discussion on what Commissioner Bissell has recommended?
Mayor, I'll be recuse myself.
Okay. Okay, no more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we will not do the restructure at this time. And then that brings us talking about the actual budget.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I guess, I really appreciate everybody in meeting with me. The, I've got, I left some notes in the email I sent, really, the only change, and there were two changes in revenue from when I talked with y'all. The, we decreased the rezoning revenue from eighteen thousand three hundred to three thousand four hundred. And after I talked with Mr. Hall more, it seems that he predicts anywhere from twenty-five to thirty additional building permits than I was anticipating. So I upped that, upped line item 32610, ten thousand based on that. Other than those two changes in the numbers, everything's exactly the same. That's when we sat down. And I've got a lot of other notes, but a lot of these are going to be dealing through budget amendments throughout the year. We talked about this budget being focused on operations, and then some of the reserves we built up through the fifteen cents, utilizing them, trying to take care of some of the projects that we had listed. And I added some projects that, that different, different board members wanted, and we will try to get as many of them done as, as, as we can.
Okay. As I stated in the last meeting that we had about the discussion, the budget, I had some concerns that, and I do believe that we should, there are some employees that were in a high ranking title but not receiving the pay. And I know as presented, you were going to try to this year justify, bring them up to the correct pay. What positions, did you do that on?
Mayor, everybody in this budget has a 2% COLA increase if the board so chooses. I've, I don't know how to make it fair and equitable to give somebody else more than, than a 2% raise and not, not another employee. So I, I guess, I'm kind of, at this point in time, until we get our, our procedures and policy handbook and our pay plan the way we want it, I don't know of a fair way to single people, certain employees out and not the, not other employees. So I'm, I don't have an answer for that.
So you didn't make the adjustment that you were referring to?
I don't remember referring to that. I, I remember the board, majority of the board members wanting a 2% COLA. I do feel like I got the impression that any merit raises were out this year, and I will be more than willing to adjust any numbers on the, on the, on the payroll side that the board so chooses.
Yes.
What two positions have, were, were there? I'll be with just two. They have been moved up into, or not being compensated for those positions?
That does not affect this year's budget. That was last year's budget, or the one, the budget we're in now. That was two misclassified employees. One was a deputy court clerk, and the other was the finance clerk. And they were, it was an error on my part. It was.
So had they been adjusted?
Yes.
Okay, that was the question.
But there was promotions in the fire department. It was brought up when, when we discussed you wanted to give us a range to move forward on the tax rate. And we got off into discussion of the budget, and there was, you presented something that stated there was people that have received promotions and that y'all were going to make their pay.
Oh, I, I'm, the, yes, we got, the people that were promoted were made whole in, in this budget.
Okay. Okay, and then I stated that we also had other employees in the codes department that had increased their job titles, and I would like to see a potential to reconsider the codes department. I have a problem, and I've seen this for several years, no offense to my police and fire, but we are always talking about increase, increase, increase service. But I've seen them cut, cut, cut the codes department. And I think some of our issues this year have been that we used to have two inspectors. We used to have, you know, a full-time director over there and a clerk. Now, we're back, and we were really in a slow, it was fine, cut, 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 when we were in slow periods. But now we have employees that have doubled their workloads, and they are now, if we're making it right for one or two, I'd like to bring those positions up. There was a part-time position that was approved by the board six months back, and because a budgetary may have been more than six months. But I would like to see that included in this budget, is that clerk, part-time clerk. I would also like to see some kind of compensation for their positions, whether we make, you know, our inspector, a senior inspector, and give him the bump for the increase in job. And then we need to, again, look at hiring a second part-time inspector, which we had that, not even two years ago, maybe, three tops. This is the one department that we got to get right. And I believe it's the one department that has potential to bring in revenue. And as the increase building, we've got to be able to increase our service. So I would like to see, and I think there's room in your budget, even if we do wait on a project here or two, I would like to see us get the codes department on the right track. And, you know, I think some of the issues we've seen in that department has been the cuts that we've made. And so I would like to consider putting in the budget those positions.
I agree.
Yes.
Mayor, I, I can support if, if we believe the workload, if the city manager believes the workload, and codes director believes the workload has other people, or is in need of other people, if we need to put a position or two in there. I, I can get that. I don't think the board is, or should be, in the process of reclassifying jobs. I, I think that's something that the new city manager and the codes director should do once that has been filled, and can look at how the duties are assigned and what, what shakes out. But I, I can support hiring a couple of people.
Well, here's the deal. If we don't put it on this budget in the line item and put it in, we can't, we would have to come back and do amendment anyway. So if we're doing a new budget and we're creating line items, this is the time to do it.
Yes, ma'am. But I, I, it's been my experience that during the last year or so in the budgets, response to the budget situation, while I don't disagree what you're saying about the codes, I have no reason to do that. I think the street department has done more with less. I think the parks department has done more with less. I think everybody has experienced attrition and has, has contributed. So I would rather see us go through a comprehensive process of the entire departments rather than for us to try to pick and choose one at a time. And, and I think to have, to have that done is something that we would want our new city manager to do, and to be able to endorse that, since it would be their staff.
Well, and I agree, he's, the new city manager should hire these positions, but if we're at budget times, it's just like we approved already for the part-time, you know, clerical staff, then it's already in there. So we have to fund it. And so that's what I'm trying to do. And then while we're here, we might as well discuss. And I don't know, correct me, jump in as codes director. I think that, that this was something that.
This is an idea that I have brought forth to you. Just take, for instance, John was on vacation a week or so ago. We had several people wanted inspections, even though we were farming it out to the county, but a lot of the people wanted to wait on John and his expertise. So that doubled his workload when he come back. So that's the reason that I think that the part-time inspector would be key. And of course Sharon is, she's pretty covered up from time to time because she's, and then John's also handling the board of zoning appeals for us too. So, and when I get over there, I'll do everything I can to help both of them. And I'm starting to transition over there already now. And I handle a lot of complaints out in the city, such as grass too high and all this kind of stuff. And John, I'll tell them the address, and John will take a picture of it and send them a letter. But I try to go and help as much as I can at this point in time. It is, and as far as the new building that's coming along, we have roads going in in two subdivisions right now. So there's going to be a lot of new houses going up already this summer. So I'm sure he's going to be covered up.
Okay. Is there any other discussions on the budget in any other areas?
Mayor, if we're going to do that for the codes department, to reinforce what I just said, I, Keith's in the back, and if it would be okay with you, I'd like to ask him how many people he could use in the streets and parks.
Well, I mean, you can ask what, you know, we can do a wish list for every department. But the issues are, we still are having to come up with funding. But if we want to go back and have a wish list of what you need, I mean, Terry put, Chief Harris put in a wish list of things he needed, and also the fire department put in. So I would assume that everybody would have an opportunity they can put in, we can determine. But I'm not just talking, and I'm sure the parks department could use more help, and I know they're short staff in some areas. But I'm looking at a crucial department that we've gotta get right. We have all these buildings, all these subdivisions that are being developed. I don't know financially, and Tom can tell us if we can, or if we wanna remove some projects and get some of the employee issues right, then that's fine, if that's how we go as a board. But I always hate the, let's just tackle it all, that's what gets us in trouble. I say let's take one department at a time and try to get it right, with the budgets as we grow, as the money comes in, and let them move forward. But I'm not opposed, I mean, we might find there was a real need, but that's...
Well, I'm agreeing with you on the past practice of giving preference to the police and the fire department. You and I are in sync there. I just, just to give you the example, we're very proud of our roadscapes. Somebody's gonna have to maintain the roadscapes.
I agree.
That's additional work. We added Dr. Rice's and the history village, and now we do additional work out there. We added Veterans Memorial Park, we do additional work out there. We've expanded our program significantly in the park, we do additional work out there. We're trying to do more paving, we hired a new chipper, we lost several people on that. Well, I mean, I agree in principle that people shouldn't be asked to do more than what's humanly possible. I think that to single the codes out without looking at these other places too, and I think we can afford them all, is my point, but I think it is, it is a... Granted, we have given preference in the past to police and fire. I think it's time to maybe expand your idea to the other part of our organization that's also kinda been left to just deal with it.
Well, I'm not arguing that point, I'm sure there, and there is additional, but a lot of additional. And if they wanna come up with a list and we can look at it, that's fine, and the readings, but I personally have taken an interest, because I've seen, I sit on the tree board, and I sit on the planning commission, and I sit, you know, and I've seen some of these things that have occurred, and it's because we've cut, cut, cut services. And I would like to write all the departments, but I'm realistic that, you know, let's just do it. And if this budget year, while we're still in the restructure stage, and we're... Let's just pick one department at a time, with intent that as we grow each year, we restructure. If we need some positions, we consider it. And I hear what you're saying, I mean, I agree with your saying, I wish, but I hate to take the people's money. We do have a lot of great projects, I think people have suggested, and I'd like to see some of it happen, but you're right. Like, one of the things that I had brought back up is the splash pad, well, that's gonna take extra parks. I mean, you're 100% right, so there's a lot of things, the streetscape is, it is more maintenance, they've got mulching, but I don't want to over... Do it too quick, I want us to catch up with ourselves, and be able to still lower the citizens' taxes again next year. We brought it down to the tax rate, and I would like to see us be able to still... I don't think the ideal is to hold on to the people's money. I think the idea was to, once we get our reserves back built up, then start designating, which y'all did a great job, presenting, these are the roads we're gonna pave, these are, this is the projects we wanna do with this overage. And I think we can sit down with any commissioner and say, or any citizens and say, this is what we're doing with this still money that we had increased the year before. So, I mean, if you wanna take a look at it and bring it back, you know, that's fine.
Well, I don't need to take a look at it, we have the director in the back of the room, I just, I'm sure he has an opinion. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I know he's, I know he's lost several people, and so if he doesn't have an opinion, or he doesn't wanna ask for anybody, then I'll be quiet. Otherwise, yes?
I'd like to address the issue in the public works. We've had an attrition there, Zane Greer, that hadn't been there since November. And then Tag Earlton is no longer there, so that we've lost one full-time and one part-time. And they could definitely use, and of course I have permission to go ahead and replace anyone that's on attrition, but I'd like to see at least two full-time hired in there, you know, so that would give them a better working crew. Because right now they're down to, some days they're down to two because of vacations and because of sickness and that type thing. That's it, they got an awful lot to do out there. And I know Keith could probably speak to that better than I am, because he's with it daily.
Keith, go ahead, go on down, The Price is Right.
As Mr. Hall stated, we actually have four full-time employees in the street department. Currently, everyone's trying to get rid of vacation, so the last couple of days, we've had two people working, same amount of work. We do have a couple of applications we are looking at to fill one of the positions that was, that we lost. It would be awesome to be able to fully staff the department. I mean, we could go back to a couple of years ago, to where there was eight people in the department. Same amount of work, these guys are killing themselves out there keeping up with the work, and there's more work every day, it seems like anyways.
How many people do you have in the department now?
Street department, currently you have supervisor and three employees under him. So there's a total of four employees.
Okay, and as of two years ago, you said?
A couple of years ago, there, I'm not exactly sure of the years, but there was about eight.
So you're counting the people that, because at one point people went from the park to the...
Right, but they were still considered street department workers. Because I was actually doing some of the maintenance out in the park at that time. And we know we can't fund, obviously, everything. It would be awesome to be able to add another one or two employees to that department. And even with the parks department, it would be really nice to add at least one employee, whether it was a seasonal one or a full-time, full-time would be, you know, for maintenance, so that we could actually possibly just keep one maintenance worker in Bowie Park, and the other two doing the other parks for, you know, right now.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, I hear everything everybody's saying, and I don't agree that we need probably more people. In a perfect world, we'd be able to hire those people, but we do not have an endless supply of money. And I feel like we're going down a path of where we're trying to balloon employee-related expenditures again, up to a point to where it's just not manageable for us on a year-in, year-out basis. I'm concerned about that, I mean, last year we were talking about trying to shrink the size of the government. This year, we're immediately talking about trying to expand the size of the government. I know we need more people, I know that we do, I know last year we needed more people and we had to make tough decisions. But I don't think we're ready for, to expand employee-related expenditures again. I mean, that's what we were trying to get under control, and here we are having this discussion. I mean, thank God, we're not talking about positions being cut this year. I mean, I think that's wonderful, and we're not having to have that tough discussion. So, but to jump from that to let's hire more people, I just can't get there fiscally. You know, and I do agree with Commissioner Russell's comment earlier that I think there are some things that need to fall into place, we need to get a city manager in place. If the chief of police is retiring at the end of June, then we've got a chief coming in that may or may not see things from a human resource standpoint the way that we see them, in terms of the way things need to be aligned or structured, or the positions that are needed. And, you know, I'd really like to hear what they have to say. And in addition, I don't know where it is in here, it may be under one of the projects list, but I know we had discussed consulting from a human resource director, and I guess that'll be contingent upon what background the new city manager has. But I would like to hear what they have to say from a, you know, from an organizational total picture, so to speak, the overall picture of the organization, where we are from a structural standpoint, and whether it's consistent with where we should be as this size city, with this size budget, or do we have room to grow, or where we are. So that's, those are my concerns with this discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
What percentage of the budget is salaries this year?
It's about consistent of what it has, it's between 70 and 75 percent. I think it was like 72, 73, right around there.
Because one of our goals was to try to cut that. Just curious thing.
Well, I guess what it boils down, and I understand, and I actually agree with Commissioner, I'm still scared to move too quick, but I know that we have a codes department, and we have some way, they have taken on so much more on the workload, and we did not compensate them, nor has it even been considered. And that just bothers me, and I'm being that voice that it bothers me. And I think if it is hiring that part-time clerk, whatever, was approved, then that needs to be, it was already approved, so it needs to be put in. We need to relieve them or compensate them, it's only right, so. And I only, I have had complaints, so I'm not meddling in city manager, but he also, we've had complaints on, you know, things that were... So I just, I think it's wise as we move forward, yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, I wanna just touch on what you said there at the end about city manager issues. I mean, look, this board is in control of the finances of the city. So, I mean, we're not overstepping our bounds from a legislative standpoint to make decisions as relates to the personnel in terms of this budget. And we're not stepping on Mr. Hall's toes to do that. I mean, we spend a lot of time talking about what the city manager can and can't do, and what we can and can't do. But as I mentioned earlier, the reality of it is, I mean, we, by virtue as a collective body being his boss, have some say in what happens on a personnel issue on a day-to-day basis in the city. I wish we didn't, as much as we have, I would rather come up here for two meetings a month and go home and not have to hear about what's going on day-to-day in the city at all, trust me. But with that said, I, you know, I think what we're speaking of is maybe, in terms of the codes specifically, is maybe they're just not classified right in the chart, or in the page structure. I don't know, I mean, I don't know how this was created, I'm not a human resource specialist. Some of this looks rather arbitrary to me, the placement, and just to use one example, I mean, I think the court clerk, as a grade six, I think that's low. I mean, I think her being here almost 20 some, almost 30 years, making what a police sergeant makes is low, in my opinion. I mean, so I think we could look at that overall, and maybe the codes just aren't in the right classification based on the responsibilities that they have. But I'm not equipped to make that decision, I mean, it would just be arbitrary. That's why I really wanna hear what a human resource person has to say. Maybe we need to, you know, I think we need to really look at that part of things, you know, more than anything else.
Yes.
I think there's two considerations here, number one, are they just in the wrong paid classifications? If so, correct it, are they overworked, to where they can't completely work what they should be able to do it in the right way? Then you're gonna have to have another person, part-time, full-time, that's the two options that you're gonna have to have. So that, I think that's where we need to look at it right there, if they can't handle it, we understand, I know they're overworked. Do we need another person? I don't think, I don't think that's gonna handle the problem with them not being able to handle it and give them more money. Adjust the pay rate if they need to be adjusted, but if it's a problem of can't get it done, then we need to look at another person.
Well, and that's probably a conversation the codes director or city manager could say, you know...
I mean, that's just my opinion on it.
No, no, I agree, I'm not saying that, I just...
Am I correct when I say I just said?
Yes, yes.
I misspoke, when I was talking about the court clerk, right now she's classified with senior police officer, senior firefighter, and I think what I meant to say was, I think she probably should at least be classified with the sergeants and the, you see what I'm saying? I mean, it seems like to me there's some, in the page structure, there's some issues that we need to address that maybe we're equipped to address tonight, maybe we're not, I don't know, but I'm like, I'm like Commissioner Russell, I don't know that we should take one by one and go down through here and express our concerns with them. I mean, I think we need some insight from a professional in that area, and I'm not that person.
Well, I think probably at some point as the board, we need to determine if, if this is wait for a new city manager and then readdress it, we can always come back and amend the budget, and that is fine, as far as I'm concerned. But I would like to see the position we already approved added into this budget, and it hasn't been. So...
Part-time?
Mm-hmm, whatever we, part-time codes, we already approved it.
That's good with that, I'm agree with that.
And then, once we come back, we will, when the new city manager gets in place, maybe he can take a look at the departments and see what they need. Okay, so anything else that we need to hash out on the budget in this first reading? Yes?
I have no direct or indirect interest in the subject of this vote. I am hereby disclosing that my son is an employee of the city. I am making this full disclosure of this fact, I intend to vote on this motion.
Okay.
I recuse myself.
Okay.
Well, if I recuse myself, there'll be no motion, am I correct, Larry? Larry?
If you second it, did you second it?
I don't think so.
Who did the first and second?
I'm sorry, I was reading the thing that added you.
They both basically recused themselves. You are gonna vote on it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay.
He just might read the statement.
I'm good with it then, that's fine, I'm gonna recuse myself. I just wanna make sure we had enough votes.
Okay, so the, any other discussion? Let me just double check, I have no other.
I do, I do wanna say that if we do pass this first reading, that this change will be in the second reading, and we can be moving forward, staying on a timely manner.
Okay, can I explain to us how the project list is gonna work?
As you know, we took out, out of the property tax increase, we took out five cents, five cents going to streets, five cents going to parks, and five cents going to debt, paying off debt in 10 years. That comes to $85,000 a year each. That money can either sit there, or if the board so chooses, can use it to take care of projects. Or, for that matter, whatever other purpose you want to use it for. Also, we've got special revenue... Also, we've got special revenue funds that we can use to also work on projects. So that's, but we're keeping it out of the operational budget unless, we do have some things in the operational budget. We have all the paving, we have $140,000 of paving in the state street aid budget, which I consider that a special revenue fund, but the way we're set up, it's in our general fund. And, and I didn't mean to say that because I know that's going to complicate things for people, but it's, it is a special revenue fund, and it's restricted to street expenditures. Most of our, the rest of our revenues are going towards the stabilization plan, and I really feel confident we very, very, we should be able to get it done next year. This budget also includes an additional five cents, that's down the road in J, depending on what the tax rate is going to be, but if we keep the certified tax rate, it would be an additional five cents. If y'all wanted to designate that to something else, or if y'all wanted to keep designating it the same, or if y'all wanted to re-portion any amount, that'd be up to y'all.
What do you mean by it would be an additional five cents? Would it be five cents above and beyond the 15 cents that we...
No, 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 it would just be the same as it was last year, five cents each.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I meant, I didn't know I misspoke on that. But pretty much, the difference is, you know, the, any other surplus we have will be because we're very conservative in our revenue projections, we use last year's budget numbers, so we should have an additional surplus there. If, but we won't know what that is till fourth quarter, possibly could use some of that money. What I've been expressing to employees is if we can white knuckle till we can get our reserves where they need to be, get the stabilization plan taken care of, the budget should open up substantially the next year. Now, that doesn't mean everything will be able to be taken care of, no. We're going to have, what we're going to be working on is looking towards the future, our capital improvement plan, our, how to be, you know, being proactive instead of reactive, working hopefully with a new city manager, getting all of our processes down, where we're checklist, make sure everything's done the same way in every situation. We've got, we've come a long way in two and a half years, but we've got, we've still got a long way to go. But I like the direction we're heading. But I think if we can, if we can make it one more year, and get our reserves where we, where they need to be, it's, but it's going to be some more opportunity to do some more things. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, but you, they, what did Brad Coleman come back with the rate?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, it's in, it's a...
It's 87 cents, right?
Eighty, yes, and I went ahead...
And we originally said 90, but you've made all those adjustments to what we were originally.
Yes, it's .8764.
Okay. And I still agree, we need to go with the state's recommendation.
Okay. But like I said, I'm, I feel good about this budget. I feel like we've been able to increase a little bit. We had, we had firemen that have been put off getting gear, you know, so where some of the increases, like in uniforms, were getting caught up on some gear that wasn't, we hadn't been able to purchase. And just catching up on a few of those things that we just put off for a year and a half.
Okay.
You've been very conservative with anticipated revenue also. Go like this.
Yes, yes, that's, I think that was the whole point, using the prior year's numbers, and it's, I think we'll, that's going to do the city well.
I looked at some of the adjustments that you made on some of them, so I'd say, yeah, what's the anticipated difference in the gas tax revenue according to census population?
Ah, the numbers, I've got a sheet, let me get with you at that. I've got the numbers, but I don't have it right on top of my head.
That's okay. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just...
You didn't use the census. Did you have any projections to use?
It should start in October.
But you didn't use that in your budget?
Yes.
You did?
Yes. Well, I think it's...
And did you subtract the hall's tax, whatever adjustments they're making?
There's no adjustment this year, I think the adjustment's starting next year. Is it one cent this year? I think it starts the year after, doesn't it?
It's one cent this year, then it...
It's one cent every year after that.
No, it's going, it'll take bigger jumps later on. It won't stay at one cent.
Okay, the letter I got says it was one cent for five years.
Okay, well, I was just making sure you're making those adjustments. I don't know how many, I mean, I think we...
It's not a big number, it's like $27,000.
Yeah. It's not going to cost us like it will some cities. Anything else that we need to discuss? So, we are, have a motion on the table, I guess. No motion.
I make a motion to approve the budget first read.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second to approve the budget on first read. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to a, discuss and take action on resolution number 07-16, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining a public comment on the proposed budget for the city of Fairview, Tennessee for the fiscal year 2017. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer this to Ms. Brandy.
This is just the resolution to set a public hearing on the budget. And Tom and I just discussed this, and it would require a special meeting based on time requirement for space in between readings, as well as publication time for the paper. So, we've tentatively set that for June 23rd, which is a Thursday.
Okay, let me look, now it's July, there we have three. I just have to look at the calendar, I'm sorry.
No.
So, you're thinking... So would we need to set it, do like the 9th, is that what you're thinking, or?
June 23rd.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm available.
Okay. And what time?
We had seven o'clock, that's up for change.
So that means second read would actually be on that date?
That's right.
And the public hearing, good. Because I will not, I will be out of town on the next meeting, which would be the 16th, June 16th, the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Couldn't have it then because you wouldn't have enough time to get it advertised.
Well, that's good.
Days required by the statute.
It works out.
Okay, so if everybody's good with that, she can move forward?
Yes.
And do we, we don't need to vote, so, discuss and take action on first reading on section nine of bill 201616, ordinance number 930, and huh?
We didn't pass the resolution to set the public hearing on...
Okay, okay, I didn't...
Motion to set the public hearing on June 23rd at 7:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, going back. Discuss and take action on first reading on section nine of bill 201616, an ordinance number 930, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got first and second. Any discussion?
Is everybody, this is just setting it at .8764.
Right.
Mayor, may I say something to just clarify? I'll make it very brief, because I know the hour's late, but it was talking about why you have to consider the budget first and the tax rate second, was because the state requires it, that's good enough reason, but the history behind that is this. For one time, legislature was thinking logically. Your budget itself is a list of items that you intend to accomplish during the year. So they said, let's pass the budget, let's pass that list first, and then you tailor your tax rate to finance what your list. You don't take your tax rate and set a number, and then tailor your list to fit that number. It's play on semantics, but that's, that's the history behind it, and it, all the time during your time, I just heard it mentioned, and I thought I'd pass it when we got the tax rate.
No, thank you. Okay, so...
So who's official recommendation is this rate, Tom?
That is the certified tax rate. It came back to Brad Coleman.
Which would be revenue neutral for us.
Okay, so, all in favor? Where am I? I've already lost track. Did we already vote on it?
Got a first and second.
Got a first and second, so we're done with discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Discuss and take action on resolution number 0816, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining a public comments on property tax for the city of Fairview, Tennessee for the fiscal year 2017. Mr. Darty.
Thank you. I'm going to defer this to Brandy. I think it's the same as, but...
This is, this is to set the public hearing for the property tax rate.
Motion to set the public hearing for June 23rd at 7:05 P.M.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discuss and take action on bill 201617, ordinance number 931, ordinance for amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee, budget to the fiscal year 2015 and 2016 budget, historic village.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any explanation, Mr. Darty?
Yes, this is the item that the board approved last meeting for the 17,000 to be given to the, to be provided to the historic village for the water tap and other improvements, so they can be opened legally and all that. And I did want to say that I want to, I'd like to piggyback this, this agenda item onto the 23rd meeting, so that we can be sure to get it in this year's budget, have it two readings. So, it's the same as the budget, it's not enough days at the 16th meeting, so that's my request.
Okay.
Moves include the second reading on June 23rd at the seven o'clock meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, city manager, items of discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, all I have tonight is, I just want to thank Tom on the hard work that he's done on this budget. I think he's done a yeoman's job. He could furs the beef from certain times, but he's the one behind it. He's just done a fantastic job, and not to say that everybody else in the city's not doing a fantastic job also, so I just want to compliment everybody in the city tonight. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further than that.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Is Chief Harris still here? Is he gone? Ask him to step in for just a second, please. You don't mind.
Share comments. Your turn.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
Chief, I just had a couple of questions, if that's okay, if you don't mind answering. The lady that was here earlier made some comments about it, which I appreciate all her comments and concerns about everything else. My son, Mark Sutton, is one of the ones on the investigation. It's this time he's classified as Assistant Chief of Police, which I think you appointed him to. Have I ever, at any time, mentioned anything concerning this case to you? And I'll ask the city manager the same thing. Have I had any discussion with y'all whatsoever?
No, sir, not with me.
I have no discussion with any commissioner about this case. I'm not allowed to say anything. And you've not came to me and said anything.
Don't, I've got a little bit more integrity than that, and I feel free for anybody to contact the sheriff department, or any of the people investigating, to ask if I've had any input or any conversation with them whatsoever about it also. And I can understand why there would be a question about it. But feel free to ask and investigate all you want to. I have stayed as far away from this as I could possibly get. I'll just say, period, I'll leave it at that right there, but you collect me on this right here, Terry. If Mark was a volunteer for four years?
Yes.
And I believe he was with the department 10 years full-time after that?
Yes.
Before I ever moved to the city or was elected?
Correct.
Just want to make that very clear for maybe the paper over there, whatever, maybe you might get it right. So, I had nothing to do with his hiring?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Russell.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will try to be brief with the long-term, but I've got some things that I just really feel like I need to say. First of all, I was at that meeting on February 29th. I participated in a discussion about Chief Harris's return. I endorsed that return. I did not participate in a vote. In fact, I'm the one that placed the call to get Chief Harris on the line, to discuss his possible return with the group of people. I believe it to be a legal meeting. I believe that everything that was discussed in the meeting was within the purview of an executive session. I agree with the mayor that it's always been my understanding that you should say very limited, if anything, about what goes on in those meetings. So, I am a bit dismayed that for whatever reason, all this recording and this reporting on one another, and calling the news media, and all this other stuff that's going on, I don't think it's helpful, I don't think it's helping us move to a better solution. And I certainly think that it has done more to hurt the overall investigation than us getting to a resolution than anything else. So, I can, I can only control myself, and my personal attention is going to be to controlling my behavior and making sure that what I say and/or do does not contribute more to the problem than to help solve the problem. And that would include my input to the... And that would include my input to the City Manager. I did send a note to Wayne, which I believe was in my authority to do so based upon what Commissioner Crutcher read from us, where we as individuals can provide input to the City Manager. And I did offer in that several different courses of action. I want to stand firm to Wayne in public that I did do that and that I have offered my opinion, but it is my opinion. He is the City Manager and it's his decision, and I will abide by his decisions. So if it was taken in any other vein, I apologize for that. It was my desire because I needed to say those things to someone and tag you were it. So I shared that. And I hope you provided food for thought. But whatever the decision is, when you make that decision, you unequivocally, as the City Manager, have my support for that. It is your prerogative to do that, just as it was my prerogative to give you that, my opinion. I will also tell you upfront that I have spoken to one of the officers that is on administrative leave. To my knowledge, we don't have anybody that is suspended. And if we did have someone that was suspended, I would not speak with them. But the officer that I have spoken with is a citizen of the City of Fairview, and I believe that he has the right to contact his Commissioner and to share with him his concerns. And so I have spoken with him on more than one occasion. I've not met with him. I have not tried to offer any guidance on what he should do in pursuit. But I did feel incumbent to listen to him. And on those actions or grievances that he shared with me that I felt could be addressed, I shared with the appropriate official those items. So if that makes me guilty of something, I'm guilty. And then the last item is nepotism. And I don't disagree that it may be time for us to have a stronger or clearer-worded policy. But like my peer, Commissioner Johnson, we have operated for years with the current policy that's on the books, and it didn't seem to matter. It is of late that our family members have been the ones that have been used as the example. And while you can say that it just happens to be that they're the example, I, when listening to the arguments, always come back to what is the definition of nepotism. And the definition of nepotism, and I'm paraphrasing because I didn't write it down, but the definition of nepotism, as I recall, is that I did something that caused my family member to have favoritism or to get something that they were not qualified for or did not perform for. Now, if what we want to do is to look at that policy and change it, I can see some logic. And as I have said before, I understand maybe some positions being off limits. But I will never really think it's the right thing to do to tell someone that they can't work someplace because they have another family member that's contributing to the same organization. And I can tell you that I spent 35 years working for an organization of 120,000 people. And the only nepotism rule that we operated under was that you couldn't work for your family member. In fact, it was actually, besides the person's work performance, the number two item. If a family member who was a good employee came to you and said, "Hire my sister. She will make you another good employee," then she was given consideration for that because that was the next best indicator to her own performance that she would be a good employee. So, and in the 35 years, 28 of which I served as a manager, I never once had a problem. So that's why I have such reluctance when we want to say, tell people they can't apply for jobs because they have a family member. I think the real issue is the behavior of the five people sitting up here. And you can live your life, you can do whatever you want to do, as squeaky clean as you live it, and somebody will take issue with something you've done. Somebody will take the other impression. And it seems to me that to aggrieve a person simply because they're a relative is just not something that strikes me as the fair thing to do. So that's what you hear from me when you hear my reluctance around this. It's not that I think that Commissioner Crutcher, because he brought the issue up, is trying to pick on my family member. But I just, my experience and my belief is just different. And I think as a city, the behaviors that we're trying to control is not that of the applicant, not that of the potential promotion, not that of the relative. What we're trying to legislate here is the behaviors of the five of us. And to take that out on those people is not fair to me. And that's where I come from. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to share those things.
Thank you. Commissioner Crutcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mayrham did make some good points earlier in citizens' comments. And one of the things that she said that really tugged at me was is that we have leadership that can't communicate with one another, and I'm paraphrasing, like adults. And that's a problem. We have five people sitting up here that has a lot of trouble communicating with one another and putting things into perspective that we're here trying to do what we believe to be best for the city from a policy standpoint, and this is not personal. I didn't get this, I didn't run for office to, you know, come up here and try to somehow manipulate or control someone's life. I don't look at this as some game. I look at this as serious business. And, you know, I think, going to Alan's point on nepotism, if we want to change the word nepotism to conflict of interest, we can call it conflict of interest. I don't care what we call it. I just think tonight, when we voted on the budget, is a great example of why this could be a problem. We had the potential of three people sitting on this board that could have recused themselves or abstained from voting. We had two that did. If Commissioner Bussell would have taken that same position, we would have been left without a quorum to vote on a budget tonight. If that doesn't put forth the issue that I have with having members sit on this board that has family members working for the city, then I don't know any better example. And that was by the actions of those that sat here tonight. You know, this is not 1959. This is not 1990. This is 2016. Most municipalities have nepotism provisions in their charter or in their policies and procedures or as part of their ordinance. The policy that I put forth in November was taken largely from area municipalities' policy. You know, I didn't sit down and say, hey, you know what? I'm going to come up with a policy because I, you know, I really don't like Commissioner Johnson or Brandy. Because that's not true. I do. I've known that man sitting down there on the other end of this bitch for the better part of my life. I don't have anything personal against him. I don't have anything personal against Ms. Johnson. I don't have anything personal against Alan Bussell or Brian Bussell or Vice Mayor Sutton or Mark Sutton. This is not personal. This is not because a group of citizens who happen to maybe think the same way as I do feel strongly about a specific policy that I'm putting forth. I'm not up here putting forth policy because someone has told me, "You need to think this way." I'm 41 years old. I think the way that Shannon Crutcher wants to think, and I think the way, in terms of what I think's right and what I can go home and sleep with. Not what anybody else does or thinks. That's not how I'm going to operate. And I'm saddened that some think that's how I'm going to operate. So that's where I am on the nepotism issue. And, you know, I didn't put this back on the agenda. We tasked the City Manager to come back with a policy, and that's what he did. I didn't put this back on the agenda. I thought we were going to have a candid discussion tonight about this issue. And it turned back into the same fiasco that it did in November, where we have two Commissioners shouting at one another. Because this is a personal issue, and I get that. It's innately personal, which is the problem. In that shouting match, it was mentioned about what happened Friday night. Well, I'll tell you what happened Friday. I have nothing to hide from anyone sitting here, from anyone, any citizen. I have nothing to hide about what I do in my role as a City Commissioner. I was asked to go and meet with some of the officers that were placed on administrative leave. Since this investigation is going on, I have been reached out to by every one of them. All three of the ones that are still on administrative leave. I have been reached out to by the gentleman, the detective that was hired and that resigned the following day. I've been reached out to by him. I've been reached out to by various news outlets. I've been reached out to by various citizens about what's going on on a day-to-day basis in City Hall based on the information that's being put forth by media and others on social media and from employees within the city. And I feel that I have a duty to listen to those concerns, just like I'm sure Mr. Hall felt like he had a duty when someone comes knocking on his door that he doesn't know is recording him, to listen to their concerns. And I don't agree with surreptitiously going around with a tape recorder and recording every conversation. I don't think that's any way to do business here. I think we should be able to have candid conversations with one another without the fear of something being taken out of context or somehow used against you in the way that is happening right now. But yes, I went and I had a meeting on Friday night with those officers at the officer's home in the City of Fairview, in the city limits, who is a taxpayer as well as an employee of the citizen. I think I have every right to go and listen to his grievances. I didn't do anything illegal by doing that or against our charter. I have every, I can, any citizens that's sitting here tonight or otherwise has the right to come to me and share with me their grievance about what's going on in the city. And I feel obligated as their elected official to listen. I may not agree with what they say. I may not take any action based on what they say. But I feel like I have an obligation to listen, and I'm going to listen every single time. And if I did anything illegal, like Commissioner Bussell said, then so be it. I did. I went and I listened to those folks' grievances. And, you know, I don't know what the outcome of this is going to be. But my issue has been the inaction. And this has gone on for far longer than I ever envisioned this would go on. When we sat in that room on February 29, I don't think any of us could sit here and honestly say that we thought we would still be talking about this in June. And here we are. And it has been perpetuated for lots of reasons. And it's, but we're still having to deal with this. And I'm just wanting closure. I don't know how we can ever begin to heal and move past this issue if we don't have some sort of closure. And it makes me sick. I've stressed to the point this week, I didn't know which way to turn based off the information that I was being pounded with on a daily basis. Didn't know what to do or what I could do. That's why I'm searching AG's opinions and case law in Tennessee on this issue of what the board's role is and what authority do we have. But I am concerned, and I'll make no bones about it. This is not personal to Mr. Hall. It's been, you know, my comments or putting the issue with Mr. Hall on the agenda, his position on the agenda was not personal. It's that I'm concerned, from a leadership standpoint, that we've had some issues there. And I've told you this. I mean, it's not something that I've tried to keep from you. I mean, I want to be transparent. I am concerned based off of what's happening, what has happened. And that's why we're sitting here talking about a change at City Manager and looking to hire a new City Manager. But it's not personal. And that's what it always ends up getting turned into when it comes to a decision by this board, is it's personal. There's got to be a villain. You know, it's got to be one of us is the villain up here trying to, or you're the villain, trying to put forth some hidden agenda. I don't have any hidden agenda. I own a little piece of land over on New Hope Road. It's all I have in the City of Fairview. I don't have any land to develop. I'm not a realtor. I'm not a developer. All I care about is that we, this is my hometown. I'm proud of where I came from. But when I go to Franklin and other areas and practice law, the way we are looked at and viewed makes me sick. It makes me sick. It's my whole purpose in running. I want to be a change agent and change that perception of Fairview because that's not who we are. But to change that perception, we've got to stop all this infighting and trying to get each other and keep stuff against each other and record each other and videotape each other. And that's just nuts. And I don't know how we're ever going to heal if that's how we're going to handle business. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, where do we start tonight? I would just like to make a couple of comments. One thing is, I'm probably going to get hammered for calling executive meeting. But in the stated, and as I stated earlier, in my view, it was an executive meeting. And I would like to read you the original email that I sent out with the subtitle says, "Executive Meeting." It said, let me get back to, I've lost it. My original email basically said that Shannon had requested an executive meeting. And I said the time awake. Here it is. Shannon has requested an executive meeting about new information he has received over the weekend. Can everybody meet tomorrow at noon? So if there was any confusion, what kind of meeting it was, I wasn't corrected when I sent out the email. So now, if we have some termination on, since the attorney couldn't come, which he was invited, but he had a prior obligation that came through, if there was some confusion on if it was an executive meeting or not, then all I can base it on is what I requested. At the moment, when I heard the Commissioner speaking, on information that was discussed, and I had always been told executive meetings were not to be discussed. Now, I understand what Commissioner Crutcher said because I've often felt like that we go in these meetings, whether it's, and it's not often, but it's normally a legal concern or matter, a lawsuit. And actually, Commissioner Crutcher told me that he had some legal concerns, and that's why we had the meeting. So I don't want to split hairs right now, but I'm explaining my action tonight. When he started the conversation, I felt like he was in risk of violating the executive meeting. And it was my understanding, and I wanted legal advice. We went back there. I explained why I stopped it, and he gave us his legal opinion. I asked him to come out here. I wanted him to restate it because I want the citizens to be involved. But I wanted to make sure we did it right. Everything I have done has to make sure that we did it right. When this investigation started, it was because we had allegations with the Ronnie Williams. Once the Ronnie Williams case in the news, it was all over the news, then all of a sudden, we had employees pointing finger of who messed up, what it was. It got so big so quick that I think Mr. Hall just was really having a hard time at the point because there were so many allegations. And they were coming to. point because there were so many allegations, and they were coming to commissioners. Like, I got, I heard something, and I had to take it to Mr. Hall. And, you know, basically at that point, we, you know, there had to be a decision made whether or not there was any truth, and some of them were criminal allegations. So at that point, I, we were in an executive meeting on another matter, and I brought it to the board that I had some additional information that had some criminal allegations and that I would like and Mr. Hall, because I have authority as mayor to contact the DA and request the TBI to come in. I did that. TBI came in, and they sat in our office. They listened, I turned over the allegations that I had, and they also listened to a few employees. I don't think they called in everybody, but they wanted to basically see if there was anything criminal. That's what the TBI looks at. At that point, the TBI, after staying here for a couple hours, this was a courtesy call to see if there was anything that they needed to investigate, they decided that there wasn't, that we had definitely had some internal issues going on, that it would be better served for internal investigation. At that point, Mr. Hall proceeded, but at the time, they're just, the fingers were pointing, and you just could not decipher. So later on, and I don't have the timeframe, but I'm sure we can all go look it up, we were, there were still a lot of concerns and accusations of criminal activity. At that point, Mr. Hall had mentioned reaching out to, you know, either the county or Franklin. We actually had the conversation on a way to a meeting that maybe it had just gotten so big that we still needed to put an end to this. At that point, I'm not sure if he consulted other commissioners or if he asked, I can't really remember without going back. But at that point, Mr. Hall contacted Sheriff Long. Sheriff Long then said, "Let me get with our attorney." And then, at that point, the attorneys talked, they decided that it wasn't proper for them to do an internal investigation. So at that point, it was back in our ballpark. I did see later on at a social event that I went to as a public, and I was asking, really wish y'all could have come in, because I felt like it was too big and there was too many. I felt like there's some really people that I couldn't decipher who was having their fingers pointed and who wasn't, and I felt like we had some good people that had a lot of accusations, and we needed to do it right. And if removing ourself from the picture and having an outside agent come in was wrong, then I don't know what's right. We proceeded at that time to move forward, but in the meantime, Commissioner Crutcher requested the executive meeting, and it was because there was more allegations, new allegations. Then it was, I had to decide whether or not we needed to go back, and when I saw Sheriff Long, I asked him if they would reconsider doing the investigation. That is when we went back, they agreed to do what they said was an internal investigation, and that they would lay out what they saw was policy and look into the criminal. This is where we've gone. I've said it, I've said it in many different ways, I've said it in many different meetings. I never dreamed we would be here six months later, but I want it done right. I mean, come on, people. If you have criminal allegations being made against you and you didn't do it or you did, you want due process. You want an outside agency to come look into it. And I've been very clear, and let me tell you what, I'm at the point where this has gotten out of control, but it's not out of control because of a lack of action. We have done our part. Where it's got out of control is we expect criminal allegations and internal matters to be handled in a certain amount in our timeframe. And the thing about it is, I sure hope if somebody's making allegations against me and an outside agent's has called in, that they look into everything and take as long as they want, because allegations, criminal allegations, is a serious matter. And I don't apologize, not one bit, but what I won't tolerate is because it's not quick enough for you to have somebody lose their job, I just can't. Today, I received an honest, you know, messages, phone calls. It's gotten out of control. I was told tonight, two commissioners were going to come into the meeting, and they were going to ask for resignations, and they were going to have people resigning, and it was told that it was heard in MACO, and they got it from a reliable source, and it was Commissioner Busell. Now, if they would have come in tonight, and they would have put that on the agenda, and they would have voted for it, then they might have had some credibility. They may, the citizen may really have heard it, I don't know how, but this is where we've gotten, you know, and I'm embarrassed. You know, Ms. Mangrum, she talks about how embarrassed, you know? I spend my life trying to be good, have a good reputation, not perfect, mess up, but I've worked for several years trying to change the image and get us in the right direction. We did have some, you know, some problems financially, and we needed that direction. And I understand when the media is involved and we have things like this and whatever spin can be put, there is a reason for the citizens to be outraged. There is a reason for us to be concerned, but what we're doing is looking into that concern, or what I'm doing, I can't speak for everybody else. I would hope that's what they would do too. We can't stop commissioners from, or employees from reaching out to us. We can't, you know, I want citizens to reach out. I want to be able to calm down any false allegations. But people, let's just let the investigation end, and at that point, we will sit through, we will see what policy, they've already explained to us, and I've said it up here before, we've already seen that they will take our policy and procedures and tell us. Now, I think it's quick to sit there and jump, "Oh, there's the, they're looking in criminal, and just because the DA's gonna, you know, be at the meeting, that there must be something." I'm not saying that this is just what's going to happen. We don't know one, two, or there might have been criminal organizations, and she may be saying, "There's nothing to it." But when we start jumping to conclusions and we fall into this, and I know that the employees that are sitting at home, they're scared, I'm sure they are. They have families and jobs, and I'm sure the time is killing them, and I would love to bring them back to work, but if criminal allegations are made with me, take your time. With that being said, I love this town, I'm all about transparency, so anybody has any questions, feel free to call me. The executive meeting is not designed to hide facts from you. I have to protect us from getting what I perceive sue. Now, it doesn't mean it would have happened, but I feel like it's my obligation as mayor. With that being said, I hope everybody has a good evening.